I'll call the meeting back to order. Please rise and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and welcome our guests and those watching on cable.
So, this is just for the cable, so they're not going to project into the room, correct? Okay. But it is projecting for the cable. Yep.
First order of business is to review and approve the Andover municipal agreement for water. Mr. Gilberto, you want to make a comment?
Certainly, just that there's a draft that's in the Dropbox folder. It reflects the business term agreements between the two subcommittees representative of the selectmen from each community. The discussion, the most recent subcommittee meeting centered around the rate at which the purchase of water would escalate, should the Andover rate structure transition from a single rate to a tiered structure. And the subcommittees came to an agreement that as to a percentage, and that percentage is reflected in the agreement. The business terms are being presented to the Andover Board of Selectmen tonight as well by the town manager and the subcommittee. They've asked for communication with regard to our board's endorsement of the business terms. Right now, the attorneys, town council from both towns are corresponding with regard to a few items relative to language in the agreement, but not with regard to the business terms. We expect that that will be concluded this week, I should say we hope that it will be concluded this week, so that there'll be a document to be signatured, excuse me, signed, signed next Monday night.
And the key, and the key business terms are, it's a five-year agreement, beginning on July 1st of fiscal 2014, and expanding into 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19. Five-year agreement covers the time that we believe is needed to make the transfer and implementation to MWRA. As Michael mentioned, the rates are as follows. Andover currently has a single rate structure for everybody, and we've agreed to continue to pay that rate. The uncertainty in which is delayed getting an agreement together has been the issue of termination, which I think was settled as a five-year agreement, and two, when and if they switch to a tiered rate, what rate would they charge North Reading? And they came back recently and offered that if we were to pay a fixed percentage each year when they make that change, that would take the uncertainty out, would allow us to put a plan, financial plan together regarding water and water rates. And so we have tentatively, the subcommittees have agreed to a 5% in that case. And tonight, what we're asking for the board to do is to approve the basic core of the agreement, pending any, pending approval of town council. Where both town councils will work out any other fine languages within the, within the agreement. So with that, any questions? Mr. Yule.
Yes, the starting rate that we are paying on this, is that 310?
That's correct. And it did not increase this current year. They made no increase.
The starting rate goes back to 2014, which is 295, and then...
Right, okay.
So there'll be some adjustments for the last two months of fiscal year 14,
14, right.
And then an adjustment for the current fiscal year, which we're in, which ends June 30th. There'll be an adjustment up. So there's a credit due us for the first two months of remaining of the agreement. And then we owe them some money for the current fiscal year, but we've already budgeted for it and it's covered. So we have that covered. So there'll be an adjustment made with the first billing. We'll cover all the arrears or debits and credits as they're required. And then from the date of the signature of the agreement, we're paying the same as the residential Andover rate.
Which is?
310.
Which is 310. And our rate increase of 5% will be that of the, oh, that's only when the...
Only and if...
Only and if they approve the...
They go to a tiered rate.
So whatever our rate is at that time, if and when it happens, we'd only, we'd pay a 5% increase...
Over the previous, previous year.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
I either have point of discussion, or I can move to approve it with amendments. I don't know what the board prefers, but I have a few points of issue that are more substantive than legal language in this agreement that I wanted to raise to the board's attention.
What are they?
Well, in terms of, just in terms of that, in terms of the language, which is in the proposed, in the proposed agreement at pages six and seven, which we did discuss last week at the workshop as well, in terms of just what, just what Mr. Yule asked about. If we're to remain at the, if we're to remain at the flat rate, it's not really spelled out there. It's just an increase of 5% over the course of each fiscal period. So in terms of the language that's there, that's how I read it. I don't know if the other board members read it that way, but in terms of that section of illustrative purposes only, again, which is language I thought we were going to take out so that we could actually graph specifically what we're being charged and not...
Right.
Have some more specific language in there that this is the rate, this is what we're going to be charged. What happens if they don't go to a tiered rate in FY '17?
It doesn't change.
It's whatever they set their rate to.
No, what, sorry, hold on.
You understand that?
I do understand that. I don't think it's spelled out in the agreement.
It's not.
And I thought we talked about that last week in terms of making sure that...
Are we, are we looking at the same document?
We are.
Okay.
Under 3.1 North Reading Rate A, the language of the proposed agreement states, "At the time of the signing of this agreement, Andover charges one flat rate per 100 cubic feet for all water customers, including but not limited to residential, commercial, and industrial. For the period of this agreement, which Andover charges one flat rate for water, North Reading shall pay an amount equal to the Andover rate." So so long as they have the one, one rate system, we pay the same rate as everybody else.
So...
And then the next paragraph says, "In the event that it moves to the consumption-based tiered model", that's where we have the percentage increase, should they do that. If they don't, if they stay flat rate, we pay the same as everybody else.
And the language that I'm reading and what's in the Dropbox says, "North Reading shall move to a rate structure in which North Reading will pay an 8% increase."
No, no, no. There's a new one in the Dropbox, in today's packet.
It's in today's packet.
Today's packet.
It's in today's packet.
That's why.
Okay.
Just go to today's meeting.
I'm looking, that's what I have in here.
It's...
Yeah, I was looking at the same one.
No, no, today's packet. Packet for 615.
Good, then maybe I don't have...
I was in there.
Well, that's why I was like, I got excited because...
Well, no, I think there's some other issues too to discuss.
I thought we raised your concerns.
Right.
And we corrected the...
You're looking at the other one with the 8% and the previous proposal.
Hold on one second. Can I, where are you, where are you finding it in yours? Because I don't see it in mine.
It's unaffordable water underneath tonight's...
Oh, there we go, okay, good.
I just found it.
You just said, you just told us.
I was looking at the other one, too.
Hang on. Because I have other issues just with the way that it's stated, unless it's changed.
Well, I was just looking at that. Can I ask a question, Mr. Jim? We're meeting next Monday, correct?
Yes.
So if Andover hasn't accepted our offer, our returned offer, why don't we just hold off until next Monday?
No, because, no. They are meeting this evening. They're going to, it's on their agenda, right? They need to know that what we, the negotiating team, agreed to is acceptable by North Reading. They will then vote to approve it, probably pending review of their attorney. They're very, what's very important to them is that we have a signed agreement, and I suggested that we actually get both boards to meet jointly somewhere, right? To sign the agreement. And that we make the payment in arrears for this fiscal year before they close the fiscal year in June.
And what's that number? Based on...
I don't know what the number is. We've been paying $3.
For FY '20, 15 is approximately $39,000. That's the number that's fixed out, we would owe. Whatever else has been added to it, right. But through, through May, through May 1st, or April 30th, it was about $39,000. And we would receive a credit of a smaller amount for the last two months of fiscal year 2014. That number escapes me, Mark. No, it's not large. It's 5 cents a 100 cubic feet for two months.
What I want to say is, we encumbered money at the end of last year in the $39,000, which was the difference between the 295 we were paying and the 341 they were charging. And I think through the end of April this year, the number worked out to like $32,000. So we had enough money encumbered. So the two years basically washed out up through April.
This place will automatically connect.
And then we've encumbered enough money through the mid-'18, through the mid-'19.
Right.
So my purpose in inquiring on that, and I think Mr. O'Leary just confirmed that in terms of your discussions, we will, under no circumstances will it increase by more than 5% in each fiscal year. That's what I wanted to make sure that language reflected.
No, that's not true.
What's that?
No, that's true. The rates are right here in the document.
It will not increase more than 5%. It will increase 5% for any year they're on a tiered system. Leading up to that, it could increase more than 5%.
As long as everybody else goes up.
It's going to increase, it's going to be whatever they vote their residential rate to be.
We're going to get treated like everybody else unless and until they go to a tiered system. So again, if they raise their rates on their residential customers up there 8%, we get raised 8%. If they raise it 2%, we get 2%. If they have no rate increase, we get a zero, just like anybody else, any other customer. Because that's when they have the flat rate. Now, if they go to a tiered system, it is a definitive amount. It's whatever the previous residential rate was that we paid, plus 5%.
So it's not...
No more, no less. No more, no less. So the 5% is only definitive if they go to a tiered system. Other than that, it's subject to their annual rate setting, and we get treated like every other customer.
I'm not sure I read it that way.
And, but previous, at the previous meeting, I thought we collectively said no more than 5%. That, that's the issue.
That was on the tiered system.
Yeah, I think we were pretty clear on that.
Yeah, on the tiered system.
On the tiered system.
We were willing to pay, I think everybody was willing to pay what every other residential rate payer was paying.
And the thought behind the, paying the residential rate is a safety valve, and it's called the citizens of Andover. And as a matter of fact, their water department proposed a rate increase this year, and the board of selectmen rejected. Was there other, you were looking at some other language?
Sure, sure. I...
So are you okay with that paragraph as it stands now?
I think I'm in the minority. I would want to ensure that it doesn't increase by more than 5%.
No, this isn't going to happen. That's the agreement, okay?
Okay, well, but I want to raise it for discussion purposes.
You can vote no, but the current agreement on the table, right, is we pay the residential rate until they, until, and if they make a change to a tiered rate, at which point, because we don't know what, what tier we're going to be on, we agree to 5%.
No more than 5%.
That's on the table for vote tonight.
We agree to 5%.
You can vote it up or down.
Okay.
Okay, so hold on. Because this is different than the way you explained it to me on the phone.
No, I don't think so.
Oh, it is, it is. Make sure I understand it clearly now. So I get FY '15 and I get FY '16. Those are pretty clear, because those are at a fixed rate. So whatever they determine this tier is going to be, where we fall in whatever tier they determine, right? We will play, we will pay no more than 5% above whatever tier they put us in.
No, that's not what it says. At the, they're going to change their water rate at the fiscal year, okay? So when they vote at the fiscal year to change the next year's water rate to X, right? We pay X. If they go to a tiered system, we pay 5% of, over what the previous rate was.
Okay.
And then the following year, we pay 5% over what the rate that we're paying the previous year again.
Okay.
It would, it would appear as though, I won't even say run the risk, but it would appear as though that if, if a tiered rate system is going to go into effect in Andover, it will probably be in the last two years of this contract. So for the sake of argument, let's just say the rate is a dollar, all right? So the residential rate is a dollar up in Andover, we pay a dollar. Residential rate for this year is a dollar, we pay a dollar. Now, if they go to a tiered system in the third year, or fourth year of the agreement, we will pay one, we'll pay $1 plus 5%, 105. If it goes up again the following year, and again, the following year, it'd be 105 times 5%, which would be a dollar 10.25, you know? And that's, and so on. So that's it.
Okay, where I got confused, Steve, you had said if it goes up 8%.
If the residential rate, when they have, when they have a flat rate, no tiered system, flat rate, they charge their residents, if it was a dollar, and this year they're going to go up 8%, it goes to a dollar eight. We pay a dollar eight, just like everybody, every other customer they have. We've agreed to the same residential rate as anybody else, the same flat rate as everybody else. So whatever the flat rate is, the flat rate is, everybody pays the same. Regardless of their usage, or who they are, or what they are, they're going to pay the same rate when it's in a flat rate system. The only time that it changes for us is if it goes to a tiered system, whereby regardless of what they do to their residential rate or their tiered rate system, doesn't matter, because we're going to pay 5%.
Above the previous year's rate.
Right.
Yes.
And again, their projections, their projections were, over the next several years, approximately 8% of our next five years increases. And their water commissioners and their water superintendent suggested even this year going up 7.9% or 8%. They opted not to, and they opted to spend down their reserves and keep it at a stabilized rate. Their actual budget increase in their water department was 7.45%, which they absorbed through their retained earnings. So therefore, we benefited by no rate increase. None. We didn't pay any rate increase, nor did any other customer up there, because they have a flat rate system. But next year, if they say, we've got to go, they recommend another 8% increase, you know, and they go 6%, everybody just goes up 6%.
Jeff?
Yeah, it was, going back a few months when we've been talking about this, or years now, when you think about it, one of the primary things that we wanted to make sure that did not happen is that we paid more than the residents of... Not Andover.
Andover.
I mean Andover, I'm sorry. Okay? That, that was the impetus of a lot of our conversation. Going into the meeting that you were going to have, was it Friday? Is that when you had it? That we all discussed that, that we would agree and go in with a plan. And the plan was that we would accept no more than 5% on a tiered rate level. And that we would only pay on a, on a single rate level, no more than what the residents pay. And that was the impetus, that's what we were doing.
That's what we did.
And, and when you spoke to me on the phone, Bob, and you asked me if I support this, and I do, my reasoning was, did it fit within the confines of what we asked you to go do? And you did, so that's...
Kate?
Yes, Kate.
So, and given, given that, I also think that I would move to amend the language that requires us to commit to, because we're being treated the same as any other residential user, delete the commitment for 300 million gallons per year in each year that this is in effect. There's no need for that unilateral provision where we're going to be treated as any other regular residential customer. That's not, there's no, I don't see any benefit to having that requirement in the, in that same section.
There is, because there's, there's a history behind, if we're back to when they wanted to charge us a 25% penalty for discontinuing the contract, if it was sooner than a 10-year contract. So at that point, we looked at the average amount of water, and we looked at what our needs are. We looked at our declining wells, and we felt that if we used the baseline of 300 million gallons a year, there's no issue. And to take that out right now, we'll throw this whole thing up in the air, because they're going to turn around and they're going to say, oh, you guys are going to start to cut the water down sooner, and we can't plan for that. So we're going to use 300 million gallons a year of water, and probably more.
Through the term of this contract.
And that's a reason why that necessity for us to have in there doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist other than certainty on their part from a revenue standpoint, and certainty on our part for the delivery of a minimum amount of gallons. And now, and again, that gallons, a gallon amount, we've been assured, we'll use it. You know, we've been using it all the way along. And again, this contract doesn't extend too far out and beyond when we're going to turn the spigot on with the MWRA. It's about time-wise, and everything works well for us. There shouldn't even be a transitional year. However, they're looking for some certainty in relation to a revenue stream. We're looking for some certainty in relation to a timeline and a number, minimum number of gallons to be delivered. So it's in everybody's mutual best interest to have it spelled out, even though it may be meaningless. I'm not disagreeing that it may be a meaningless clause, other than for transparency, it's spelled out. This is what you're minimally going to buy, which is less than what we're using now, buying anyway. And then therefore, they can guarantee the revenue stream, which again, from a political standpoint, political optics, satisfies everybody north of the border. South of the border, we're going to be paying it and buying it anyway. So while it may be a moot point, it's important to be in the language, I believe, so...
And again, I may be in the minority, but I don't think we should behold in, in that manner to Andover if we're going to be treated like a regular customer. Water, we pay for what we use, and if that declines over the course of the agreement to lessen their expectation, then so be it. Even if it doesn't happen, I, being in the minority, I would say amend it to remove that language.
Because we've been at this agreement for two and a half years, trying to get this thing settled. This is the best agreement we've had on the table.
If I could.
And I'm not interested in starting over again, because that's exactly what will happen.
I understand that, but we're discussing, this is just points of discussion.
Yeah.
If I could, Kate, you have the exact same feeling many of us had about this particular paragraph. And there were other things in this agreement that were something we just could not accept. And in the end, we got rid of, I think, some of the most hurtful to the town paragraphs are out. And we left this one in, because based on the data that's been shown over and over and over, we use well above 300,000. I, I was completely against this, but then in the end, in the spirit of cooperation with them, this was a lot easier for me to finally accept it. But I was on the other side, I pushed really hard to get this out of here. But I think when you step back and you look at everything else that we've been able to successfully get to where we are now, I think it's easy to accept this now. I would encourage you to vote in favor of it, of keeping that in there. I'm, I'm still more concerned about the rate. I mean, they wanted 8%, I was happy that, and I wanted only 4%. I'm glad that we got at least, you know, as close to it as we can. I'm okay with paying a premium, because it's a means to an end. You know, for the future of this town, and the best, and the well-being of this town for the long term, MWRA is the way to go, because we can't do anything else growth-wise. Taking care of our own wells for one-third of our water is unaffordable. So I hate the idea that we have to pay this much money in increase, but it is a means to an end. I'm going to bite my tongue, and I'm going to vote in favor of it. And so I'm going to encourage you to believe me on this one, to, that, accept the 300 million gallons. I, you know, it's very low risk. Believe me, we've gone through this, like Bob said, for a couple of years. And in the end of the day, it's a low risk.
Okay, and I can appreciate that, and I, and I want to discuss these with you at this meeting.
That's great concern.
Even for my own edification of why. I do know there was a termination provision that had a significant penalty that we reviewed last week that actually came out of it.
Yep.
Which is definitely a positive. So if that was the give and take, and this is left in on that basis, then I understand that. But I think everyone else, maybe they all know, but I think it's important to discuss it.
No, the public should know.
Sure, why is it there? Sure.
Absolutely.
And like Mr. O'Leary said, it may be a moot issue, because we use more than that. We just had the presentation. We know that we consume more than that.
Well, we know that our wells are having a hard time producing what we need from them. So we're really forced to take every gallon that we can from the Andover side to try to keep those wells going as long as we can till we can get to this new source of water.
We have some other points.
Just a few other really quick points, and this, again, could be just legal, cleaned up through the lawyers, you know, fixing up like Mr. Marcyery said, but I'm looking at...
What paragraph?
I'm looking at, let me just get to, what page? 3.4, and it's on page seven of the updated one. So there's not any...
Excuse me, Kate. Just for the folks at home, we should just read what the title is, so they know what we're talking about.
I know, this is...
It's 3.4 is the bills over 60 days.
Right. And, and the likelihood of that happening is zero, right? Because we're doing it by EFT. But what happens if we do dispute a bill? There should be some language in there, in the event of a dispute, that they can't automatically terminate. Again, we discussed this last week, that short of a court order termination is, you know, is a problem. It's a public safety issue. But why can't that language be in there to cover us? What if we dispute it? We should have the opportunity to have that in there. Legal, legal language, maybe.
Just in relation to the, the need. Andover needs the money more than they need the leverage to terminate, because if they terminate, there's no more revenue for them. They would like to have us hang on as long as possible, because it's a revenue stream which they've counted on, which has assisted in building up their surpluses, which is going to go away. Their costs are not going to diminish or drop once we leave. The only thing that's going to drop is their revenue. So that, you know, if there's any dispute, you know, it's going to be on the front end of this deal, the first payment that we have, and that'll be resolved, it's pretty much resolved anyway, between the town manager and town administrator as far as what the makeup payment is. The rest of it's straightforward. How many gallons at the residential rate?
I don't believe this is new language either. I think this language has been in the contract forever.
No, no, but to Kate's point, you know, there's no protection for us. But again, I think the protection for us is the revenue stream that we produce.
But again, I'm going by the history, and I'm, I'm learning a lot of this, because you all have been steeped in it for a long time. But I'm going by the history of a random municipal rate being implemented just for the town, so...
But this had happened.
It, it did happen, so we need to have some protection.
It was never implemented, though. It was half-heartedly implemented, as, as, as part of a tactic to negotiate with us to get this contract moving forward. So it was more of a tactic than it was, I put it in the idle threat category, because we didn't, we didn't react to, to it excitedly, because it wasn't a reasonable thing that occurred. And it just brought us all to the table a little bit more quickly in order to get it ourselves.
Well, if it's something that can be added in, I think it's worthy of, you know, asking council to add it in for us, to protect us.
Mr. Prisco.
I'm in agreement with you, Kate. I, I think if you feel that the town is taking some risks, because this is a very direct paragraph. It is, it gives all the leverage to Andover. And, and I think at the end of the day, it's a low risk. But if you feel that it's in the best interest of the town, that we should have town council weigh in on it to protect us and move. They shouldn't have to turn us off if we have a dispute over the bill. I, I agree with Mrs. Minipelli. Why not, why wouldn't we want to take the time now to add those words in there to make sure that we protect us in the event that we do have a, a real dispute over a bill? It, it could happen.
Do you have some proposed language?
If I could, Rick Ross, that we have missed.
Mr. Chairman. If Mark has a point to make.
Mr. Convalley. Yeah, I would just say to this point, this has been in the contract going back to 1991. We currently are in dispute with them, and we have been for a year. They have made no overtures about shutting us off during that whole period. They've been billing us a 341, we've been paying 310. We owe them.
Three dollars.
According to their books, a couple hundred thousand dollars in arrears. I, I agree with Mr. O'Leary. They're in the business of cashing the checks we gave.
But their board's going to change over time, and I think what Mrs. Minipelli's saying, in the best interest of this town, she would feel more comfortable if there was certain language in it that protected us, because things change. And I am of full support of what she's saying. I mean, it's not her fault, we're getting ready for town council.
Are you proposing?
Very simple.
Yeah.
Start out that last sentence by saying unless bills are disputed by North Reading, comma. That's it, just put that in there. And I know what you're saying, and I think that Mr. Marsieri said that's been corrected. There's a provision in there that, and certainly the, the rates that are set forth corrects that issue. So they're not going to be charging that 341. Where are you?
That's, that's another.
Right, in the same, in the previous section of the rate, that issue's corrected.
And it references this section here, as far as any other future dispute. But any other future dispute, right now it's a flat rate, whatever the gallons you use. And then, whatever it is, flat rate plus 5% if they go to a tiered rate. So I mean, and we have a very short period of time here.
Right.
Don't anticipate. Get them.
All right, so if the majority board is in support of ask, having town council look at Kate's suggestion modification. The majority board in support of that, I'll ask Mr. Gilberto to include that suggestion when he files it with the town council.
Mr. Convalley would like.
Yes.
And I've been looking at other agreements. Some of them have a provision for dispute resolution or disagreements in Section 4, that provides a T A headline. So rather than, when you're saying that, it's just in this, this provision section, they have a paragraph that discusses how to deal with problems.
It's a great suggestion.
So, and then my final suggestion, I take it probably isn't going to fly, given the history back and forth, but. There's a, there's a, there's a provision in there that, I'm looking at page nine, section 4.10. 4.10 C.
That's the termination section?
So, I take it that that's going to be another non-negotiable Andover item, because of their expectation of projected revenue. But I would, where were you looking?
She's.
410, 4.10 C.
Page nine.
Right, north, right, it states that notwithstanding the foregoing sections A and B, North Reading may not terminate this agreement during the term of which this agreement is in effect.
So.
And what would be your objection?
What if we decide we want to terminate this if we're online earlier? You know, I know that's not likely, but again, why are we obligated in behaving?
We have to go back to the history.
Okay.
Just period.
Nope.
Again, we were talking.
We have.
We were talking about adding a year just a few days ago. And then we decided, well, if we don't get it quite done, you know, at the termination of this, guess what? The water's not getting shut off, and we'll deal with it then.
You bring up a great question, though, and this is something that we have debated as a board prior to your arrival. So I don't blame you for asking.
Yeah, I don't either.
It has been vetted. And I think it's, again, going back, it's one of those things that we've vetted for quite a while now. And I think it's a low risk at this point, because you, you saw the numbers tonight during the workshop. You've seen the amount of work and effort that we have. I gave in again on this one, too, that based on what was presented to me from the experts. We're going to need probably every, every bit of that five years we have ahead of us right now to get everything in place. And the good thing is, we have, the new supplier is going to be very flexible to work with us. If we're not pulling full gallons from them at the time we can, I don't think, it's not going to be a major issue.
And by the way, it's, it's not five years old, it's only four, four years old now, so.
But it's a low, what I'd like about it, Kate, is it, it lowers the risk on the town. We're guaranteeing the town that we're going to have a water source for them. Rather than run out of time, and then we find ourselves out there hanging. So, but that's up to you. You, you have to make your own decision.
You.
If we're okay with that, may, may I go back to 3.3, the delinquent? I had my hand up before, but you're talking about going back to council to see if we should put North Reading in there? Is that, was my, my understanding on the, on the delinquent bills?
On which one?
3.3, that's, that's what Kate was talking about before.
I'd like to know what your recommendation is.
The, I think. Your recommendation was we add in the last sentence, North Reading?
So.
That was 3.4, right?
3.4?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I guess the question that I have on that is, if we're going back to council, and they're going to say, yeah, well, it can fit in there. But what about Andover? I mean, should we be going to Andover and asking them if it's okay? Just as a FYI type thing? Versus, versus going to the lawyers? I mean, the lawyers are going to say, yes, you can put it in there, if you want, or you don't have to put it in there if you don't want, okay? If we go to Andover and they say that's okay, then we're, then we're okay. I think the discussion is not between the lawyers, but this, between Andover and North Reading.
Well, Michael Gilberto has done is he has forwarded this agreement that we were going to vote on tonight. As a result of any changes that we make, he will revise it. And our revise, or let Andover know what changes we're making, so they have an opportunity to review it. They may come back with a couple of changes, too.
Yeah.
Let's not forget the key to this whole thing. And that is to establish a control on the rate in a period of time, and have an agreement that we can put aside, get it done, and start working on the other project. We've worked on this damn thing for three years, and we're getting caught up in a few words. And I'm getting a little tired of it. Sorry.
Mr. Marsieri, I, I understand why you're a little frustrated here, but you know, we have a member that's only been on the board for a period of time. We owe her the respect to give her input. And, and obviously with Mr. Yule, he's, you know, what was stated at the beginning of this conversation. We're at the point now where we're going to be submitting this agreement to legal council, Andover and North Reading, for their final review, to dot the i's and cross the t's. So both councils are getting it, Jeff. When we make our final inputs, both councils will see it, both councils review it, and it'll get vetted. So, no one's going to be vetting it on the North Reading side without the Andover side knowing it. Dot's not what, at least my understanding, is what the intent here. This is full disclosure, and they're all going to see it.
And putting that aside, I, I suggested that what, Mrs. Manipoli suggested to give it to Michael to add to the agreement.
I'm not sure.
And that was that one item.
You seem pretty upset, so I can.
Well, I'm upset because the key elements of this, right? I don't want them to come back and start over again, over something that is not that significant. Sorry.
But for the record, I will say, we got this agreement on May 26th. Okay? The clock started ticking then. So, you've been working it a lot. We got the agreement May 26th. Mike Prisco didn't see it until sometime in June, so, you know. It's on the agenda tonight, it's for discussion, that's what we're doing. You can be upset all you want, but that's what, we're doing our job.
Any other discussion?
Well, again, I would just like to see us, vote the motion as presented. If there are suggested changes, town administrator can communicate with the town manager in Andover in relation to the. Again, I consider minor changes, I, I don't, I hope it's not a deal breaker.
Yeah.
You know, it's, you know, I, I hope your suggestions are not a deal breaker in relation to, to what's being proposed here this evening. Yeah.
I'm, I'm not suggesting that, I'm, I'm just, I want to go through this agreement publicly, and I want to discuss. Why is this in here, and why, why should it be in here? And I don't think there's anything wrong with that, that's what we're here to do.
No, 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 not at all.
I'm not taking away from any of the effort that everybody has invested in this, and I appreciate that. Because I know it's a time, it's been a time-consuming matter for years. But I want to discuss it, why it's in there. I don't think there's anything wrong with it.
We're doing it. No, 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 there's nothing wrong with discussing it at all. But I think what we need to do is, we need to, we just bring it to closure, if the chairman's proposing. By supporting the, the motion that's before you, and any suggested amendments, you know, do not necessarily have to be in the form of a, a motion that it has to be included or not. But we suggested improvements to the language, but if they don't buy into it, I'm okay with that, too. You know, to me, I just, if they include it, great, if they don't include it, great. You know, I just want to bring it to closure. And I think your suggestions are fine, and I think your questions are valid, and from your vantage point, absolutely legitimate, certainly. That's, that's good. But I just want to make sure, to the chairman's point, you know, that we don't lose sight of, you know, we have the deal here. It appears to be palatable to both sides, us and Andover, hopefully. They're going to be voting, if we vote favorably this evening, they'll be asked to vote on it this evening. And then the final detail, subject to town council review, will take place. And at that point, that's where the suggested tweaking could be included or not included. If they find it to be objectionable, I don't have a problem one way or the other. And I don't know where anyone else stands, but to me, what we have, I find acceptable. Can it be enhanced? Yes. Are those enhancements going to change the terms and conditions substantively? No. Or materially, no. So, I would just ask that we vote favorably on the motion that you, that you're probably going to make. And then the suggested changes have the town administrator carry them forward, rather than us making it subject to.
Would you feel more comfortable if I read the motion?
No. Given that posture, Mr. Chairman.
So are we prepared to make a motion?
I move to approve the inter municipal water agreement with the town of Andover for potable water service, subject to town council review and approval, and perhaps suggested language modifications that we discussed.
Go here a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record.
The modification I have is Section 3.4 in the IMA with regard to language allowing the town to dispute bills.
Yeah, yeah, should that become an issue?
And the language you suggested was to add unless bills are disputed by North Reading.
Or whatever town council deems appropriate, yes.
That was the only modification, is that correct?
There was one other item, but I think.
You're okay with that? What on the full point, whatever it was?
I just want to make sure I have it right, that's all.
Well.
If there's something else, or a change you want to make.
I, I think that's in the spirit of moving things along, and, and the likelihood that those are the provisions. I, I'll let the motion stand as it's made.
Kate, can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Prisco?
Just going back on my notes, when they go to this tiered structure, are we going to get a notification? A six-month event notice, a three-month, because the agreement's actually silent on it? And we're going to get a 30-day announcement on that? I mean.
I'm not sure if they know when they're going to even.
They haven't even, they haven't even engaged a consultant to do the study yet.
We will know about it prior to the.
And there'll be public hearing.
Can we ask for a?
I think it may help us to hear from the water department. We received notice of any changes from them, I presume along the timeline of when they have their water rate hearing. Which, based on my observations, is approximately April of each year. Has that been the history?
I do recall one time they changed their rates after December, and we didn't really have much news prior to that.
So, maybe one more.
The members in board that were here when we had our rate change in December will recall, I think they were responding probably to the same thing we were.
What do we think is a reasonable notice?
Three months, minimum?
Based on what I've observed, I would respectfully suggest 60 days. Only because it seems that they have the hearing in the March, April standpoint.
They can.
Guess until the end of April they have the hearing.
I would defer to the experts this, that if they're comfortable with that.
That still gives us time to accommodate in our budget.
I think nothing, I, I'm not comfortable with nothing. That's why I want to bring it up now. It's the last comment I have, and I'll vote in favor of this, if we can add it in.
Kate, I call, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Close, unanimous.
I'm sorry, what was the vote, Kate, what was your vote?
I voted aye.
You voted aye?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Now, we're really falling behind our schedule here, so let's see. We have a gentleman here. Before we get into. Where's Mike currently?
Mike's. Mike is currently in the, kind of Morgan.
Guys, thank you for all that, we really.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a gentleman here for farmer's market, and we have the auditors. And we have Kinder Morgan scheduled at 8:00, and it's 8:00. So, do you have a recommendation?
I would take up Coastal Vineyards, and I'm going to go speak with the auditor right now.
Okay. A gentleman from Coastal Vineyards. Uh, you want to come up to the microphone, please?
Hello?
I think you have to turn that on.
If you wouldn't mind hitting the power button on that?
Right on top.
You can barely see it.
Yeah.
Oh, it's on?
Oh, it's on, okay.
I think that's, I think that's just for the cable, I don't think, it's not for the room.
It's for the cable.
It's on, right? It's on.
So you are requesting a.
Yes, my name is David Nielsen, I'm from Coastal Vineyards. We're requesting a special farm winery license to sell wine at your farmer's market. Regulations, state regulations were changed back in 2010. And this, we've been doing several farmer's markets each year since then. We were one of the first ones to do that. So we've had plenty of years of experience and have absolutely no problem at all. In any case, with.
How many, do you have a schedule associated with this at this point?
Yeah, their, their sessions are on Wednesday.
Right, I mean, so it's during the period of time that the farmer's market's going to be at the park? That's my understanding.
I'm Ken. Kent Park 14, Winter Street. I'm the, I'm the market manager. And Coastal has sent us an application to participate in eight out of our 16 farmer's markets this year. We have 16 markets.
Mr. Yule.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you'll be selling wine at Intertriber Park on Wednesday nights?
Right, we're, we're.
Bottles of wine, that is.
Bottles of wine.
Correct, so there's no sampling, correct?
My understanding.
All right. In other venues that you do in public parks, do you have, have you been given the ability to have wine tasting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this is one of the few, and we do about 10, 10 different markets each year. And this is the, only the second one that doesn't require, doesn't allow us to taste.
Right. I guess, our bylaw says that we can't do that, correct? And I didn't get a chance to look at it, and shame on me, but can we make exceptions to that in the future? Because I would think, I don't know how you.
I think it helps the consumer to be able to, and believe me, we don't give much.
Yes, no, no, I understand that. You know, we have a specific event at a specific time with a specific venue, and it's only limited to that. And if, if you've gone to a wine tasting, you don't drink a glass of wine, you get a little sip, you wet your palate, and that's that. And you say, oh, I like this, or I don't like that. Okay? Okay? You can't get liberated by it. So, you know, my thinking would be, you know, I'm in support of the idea of you selling the wine in that context, but I think that we should look to the ability to allow them to have wine tasting in the future because that would be very productive and help him, yes, but the environment's a lot better, a lot more enjoyable.
Okay. But that's not the subject of this request at this point in time. So do we have a report from the police department on this?
Yes, it's in the packet.
Right.
And there's a report in the packet?
I mean, what I meant was, did you want to make any comments with the board?
Just while I have my report.
Okay.
I can read it if you want me to.
I just wanted to read it on record if you'd like.
You want to read it?
I don't mind. I got it right here in front of me. I will certainly do that. I think it's important to make sure everybody understands what the chief has recommended. It's okay with you? Want to read it?
Yeah. While I try to pull it up?
I'll get right to the summary portion of it. The chief states that he strongly recommended against the licensed authority issuing a permit for public consumption of alcohol at any time for Ipsut River Park. Several factors were considered during my review of the request to include. The location of the request for consumption is heavily populated area. Activities such as IRP barbecue, youth sports, and other activities, as well as vehicular and pedestrian traffic, continue until dusk. Next bullet, possible lack of oversight during the wine tasting event. Next bullet, open area, secondary dissemination possibly in a heavily populated open area. I have concerns over the access to alcohol by underage persons. Next bullet, not at one-time event. Not a one-time event. Farmers' market has gained in popularity and continues on a weekly basis. Precedence, allowing such a request would open the door for similar requests at the same facility in other public venues. In my opinion, allowing the special permit for public consumption of alcohol on a public way would not be in the best interest of public safety.
Is there any... Anything we should be concerned with with respect to this request in alcoholic beverages?
I think the chief's outlined the concerns, and additionally, in the office, we've reviewed the town bylaws, and it does appear that there is a prohibition under town bylaw for the consumption of alcoholic beverages on town property.
Right.
So I think that the bylaw is pretty clear in terms of what it allows and does not allow.
Okay. So based on that thing, discussion here is focused on whether or not to...
To sell.
At the permit. And the gentleman has said that it's going to be eight sessions of the 16 that you run and so on.
That's what they applied to participate in, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Prisco?
One area that I was surprised not to read anything on is in the health section. So you're going to have this wine at IRP, and is there going to be refrigeration provided?
You don't need to refrigerate the wine.
So, okay, I'm not a wine person, so...
Yeah, no.
Please forgive me, I'm naive, okay?
No, it's okay.
I don't want to drink it. But sitting out in the warm sun doesn't cause any public safety issues or public health issues.
The health department said they had no issues.
Yeah. I mean, that's why I was a little surprised, but I'm just learning something, so, okay. That would be my major concern, is just a public health issue when it's sitting out in the warm sun.
Yes. Just point a clear... Clarification on the refrigeration. You're correct. You don't have to refrigerate, but you do have to keep it cool. I mean, especially the white wine, correct?
To serve it, you'd want to keep it cool, yes. To...
Sit in the hot sun, that would have an impact on it.
Typically, we're under a tent.
Okay.
Which is typically under the table.
Right.
So, yes, it's seeing probably 80 degrees.
But not serving it.
But it's not something that is of any concern at all, otherwise.
Okay.
Anybody in the audience have any questions, concerns? Mr. Tark?
I just wanted to ask about... If you want me to be on the mic, I'll be on the mic. You know, when we first opened up Ipsut River Park, at that time, there was talk, you know, of being able to use it to raise funds. One of the things they talked about was if people wanted to have events there, such as wedding receptions, company outings, whatever. And it seemed clear at that time, I understand what the bylaw is, but it seemed clear at that time that for certain events, there could be... Doesn't mean that it would automatically be, but there could be the opportunity to offer up a permit to do that. Now, that was by, you know, a town employee that was being... That was selling that... No longer a town employee, but anyway, that was selling that notion, but, you know, that was kind of the common belief. Again, with the police department's approval also, but, you know, and, I mean, consumption makes it sound like a lot more of what is going on. I don't know if there's any way we can at least do a one... Do a one-time event. You know, it's very difficult for any vendor who comes in for this to get people interested without having the tasting available to them. The other question I had is, I don't know, and there may be a major provision in it, but if the bylaw says on no consumption on any town property, we've got our former Hillview experts here, how does the Hillview get by with that?
Mr. Chairman? There was a question that came up during our review of the bylaw, and we read through not only the bylaw itself, but the language that was presented at not one, but three different town meetings to both approve and amend the bylaw. And it appeared clear, at least to me, that the bylaw essentially grandfathered an existing license on premises at the time of its approval. Again, I think the original approval was in 1973, and it was revised in either '78 or '79, and then again in, I think, 1980. But it appeared that there was a clause to essentially grandfather a location and place that had a license at the time of approval.
Mr. Prisco, I think...
Could you just add a clarification of the bylaw?
Okay.
Good. Yeah. So the bylaw actually talks about not town property, but public way. So the park is considered a public way according to the laws of the Commonwealth. So that's what it refers to, and when the Hillview is having a function, it's not public. It's a private function. So that's how they can serve alcohol there, plus they have a license.
Mr. Prisco?
I'm going to vote in favor of it, but with some stipulations. I would, one, make sure that we have the tip certification thing worked out, so...
We're tip certified.
And I think there should be 100% ID check required on our permit that we give them, 100% ID check. And other than that, you know, I think I'm in favor of it. I think it's good for the farmers' market. It's had such great response, and I think this kind of adds to it as long as we have a lot of the safeties in place. And now that the health issue's been addressed, I like the idea of doing it, but only with 100% ID. That's the only way I'd vote in favor of this.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's going to be an enhancement to the program. I mean, it's been growing and growing every year, and I think this is just another enhancement to the farmers' market, make it more popular, draw some more people in, and I think it's great. I think we should go for it.
Okay. I have a suggestion of a modification. Where does the rest of the board stand on that?
I'm not overly concerned about... I mean, they're tip-certified, they've been in the business 20 years. Instead of... They do a number of other venues and locations. I know they do it at Fenway Park, but I don't think we have to do it at Ipsut River Park where you're not even serving it, you're just selling it, you know? And I think if they run the risk of a minor buying a bottle of Chardonnay, they run the risk of a minor buying a bottle of Chardonnay, and there's penalties associated with it.
We wouldn't allow that, no matter...
Right. But I...
I'll do what our... I mean, if you want me to check the 70-year-olds, that's fine, but it doesn't...
Well, why don't you make a motion as written? If Mr. Prisco would like to amend the motion, we'll do that, okay?
And I would actually...
In that way, we'll quickly understand who's in support of what.
Can I just make one comment, too? Because I'd add a little bit of extra language to it, too, given the chief's memo. And I also think, I can't cite it to you, but I think there's actually a statute regarding alcohol in a public park, too. So I think I believe the bylaw is just reflective of that state law, too. But I would make a motion just to... Just in terms of the way it's written, just to add that it's sale of sealed containers or bottles only with off-premises consumption only. So there's... Really with clarity that zero consumption whatsoever.
So you've got that already in there?
Well, I can scratch it out.
No, 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 no.
You go so fast, I have to keep track of it.
I think it's a good idea.
And it should be posted?
Would you repeat that, please? What you just said?
So it's, as it reads, it says, "Sale of alcohol during scheduled farmers' market hours through September 30th, 2015." And as the board was deliberating, I was adding some language. I would propose to just say, "Sale of sealed containers or bottles for off-premises consumption only." I think I just heard another amendment, which is post that, no consumption at the park, or...
Well, we should have it posted when they're selling it, that there's... They can't take it out to the park and drink it, or something like that. That's fine, you don't have to go crazy, but...
Control that. I can put a sign up, I can put a sign up.
That's what I'm talking about. You have a sign up there, so...
That's all you can do.
That's all you can do. It's out of your hands of that.
We still have to enforce the rest of it.
And then my other suggestion is that...
Scratch it out, but I did put down, you said, "Tip-certified sellers only," and 100% ID check for each sale. Those were the other... I added them as we were going on.
That's it.
Would you please read the motion?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a farmers' market license to Coastal Vineyards for the sale of wine at the Ipswich River Park Farmers' Market, subject to the following conditions. One, sale of alcohol only during scheduled farmers' market hours through September 30th, 2015. Sale of sealed containers or bottles for off-premises consumption only. Two, wine tastings are prohibited per Town of North Reading General Bylaw 14-1, dash consumption on public property, possession of open containers. Three, tip-certified sellers only. Four, 100% ID check for each sale. Five, posting of no consumption on premises or at the park.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Manipelli, second by Mr. Prisco. Any discussion? Mr. Yule?
Yes. In looking at this, you say for off-premises. Now, what's the definition of premises in this case? Is it off from where they are selling, or is it off the grounds of the park? What is the definition of off-premises in this case?
So, Chapter 1... Oh, I'm sorry. Chapter 138 defines each particular type of license, and this particular license request is the farmer's... The farmer's license. So it can't be granted for on-premises consumption, given the statute, Section 15F. On-premises license is the Hillview. It's a restaurant.
Okay.
It's versus a retail, which is...
See, I don't read it that way, but I read that if they sell it and someone walks off the premises, they can't consume it. That's how I read that.
So under Chapter 138, it defines, so it's an on-premises license, and whether or not this particular type of license is not an on-premises. It cannot be consumed on the premises on which it's sold. So that language is just taken from the statute.
And with your addition at the end, "tip-certified," they have to be tip-certified to sell anyway, no? So it seems like we're rewriting the laws upon laws, and it's...
You're just restating stuff.
Restating stuff, yeah. It's redundant, in other words. So I guess what I... I mean, does it really need to even be on there? It's my question. I mean, it's redundant. They can't sell... They have to be tip-certified to sell the wine, and they can't drink off-premises because we have a code that says that. So we're repeating the same thing, so I just don't see why we really need that.
Does it do any harm?
It's not a question of whether it does harm.
It's just referencing...
To me, it's an overkill, I guess, so that's how I'm seeing it.
In just in relation to Section 15F of the Chapter 138, it actually references, "App can authorize to operate a farm or winery under 19B or any other special license produced by a licensee. Sealed containers for off-premises consumption at an indoor or outdoor agricultural event. All sales of wine shall be conducted by an agent, representative, or solicitor of the license to customers who are at least 21 years of age. A licensee under this section may provide, without charge, samples of wine to prospective customers at an indoor or outdoor agricultural event. All samples shall be served by an agent, representative, no one under 21, yada, yada, yada." So, I mean, the statute provides for it, but our bylaws are certainly more restrictive, so therefore, it's already... Again, local bylaws can be more restrictive, in this particular case, than the state. So, again, I just think that... I think our basic motion was okay. The bylaw doesn't allow for consumption... Doesn't allow for the consumption on the premises, doesn't allow for wine tasting, and he can't sell to anyone under 21. Anyway, I just think it's a little overkill. So what I had hoped for was just the basic motion, if we wanted to amend it, you know, then vote on the amendment for whether it should be included or not. Generally, that's what we do, is we vote on the motion that we have presented, that everybody had a chance to look at, and then if we're going to amend it, we vote on those amendments as they come up or are suggested, rather than incorporating it into the motion. So...
So we have a motion on the table, unfortunately. We have a second. Can you hear a second?
So if we voted down, then we could vote on the main motion without all the peripheral information that isn't necessarily required.
Okay. I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
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 I didn't hear what you said, though.
I said no.
You said no.
So no.
Okay. So, on the motion is printed in the packet. Do I have a motion?
If we get to it.
Oh, I was going to read it here. I'll just read this one. Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a farmers' market license to Coastal Vineyards for the sale of wine at the Ipswich River Park Farmers' Market, subject to the following conditions. One, sale of alcohol only during scheduled farmers' market hours through September 30th, 2015. Two, wine tasting are prohibited per Town of North Reading General Bylaw 14-1, consumption of public... Consumption on public property, possession of open containers.
Second.
Okay. On the motion?
Can we discuss it?
Can you hear a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. O'Leary. Discussion?
Just quickly. I'm not trying to add things because I'm trying to make it bureaucratic. I'm trying to add things because this is at Ipsut River Park. It's where all our children hang out. You know, I think we have to do things slightly different than normal when you're selling alcohol at the park where our children, our impressionable children, are there playing. When they see alcohol being purchased, there's nothing wrong with showing them that 100% ID check. So there is no... Maybe take away a little risk that somebody's going to try to push the envelope. Because there's some kids at my son's age that look older than me, so, believe it or not. And that's all... That's the only reason why I'm doing it.
And that's all, that's the only reason why I'm doing it. I'm not doing it because I want to be bureaucratic and try to hold up this process. It's for the best interest of the community and the safety of the community. So I'm going to vote no.
No, no, make an amendment now. We have a motion on the table.
I'm done making an amendment, Bob. I'm moving on. I have other things to do. I'm not making an amendment. I made mine.
Okay, on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Carries on what?
For, yes.
I know, what was the count?
Three, yes, two, no.
Three to two.
All right, best of luck. Have a great day.
Thank you.
All right, we have Kinder Morgan here.
Perhaps you can have Jeff start with the introduction first.
Mr. Yul.
Am I supposed to use this mic?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, welcome, everybody. I want to welcome, is Kinder Morgan here? I haven't seen them. Are they here? Oh, they're outside? Okay. All right, I also want to thank elected officials for attending. Our Massachusetts State House Minority Leader Brad Jones and Massachusetts State Senator, Senate Minority Leader Bruce Tar. Is there anyone here from the U.S. Senators, Markey for Seth Moulton? Okay, and Elizabeth Warren?
Yeah, I'm representing Congressman Moulton's office.
Oh, thank you very much for telling, sending our regards and thanking for having attended. All right, and I also want to thank the concerned citizens for coming. I know this is a very sensitive issue and a very important issue to the community. The purpose of tonight's informational hearing is that Kinder Morgan will be presenting a PowerPoint presentation, and then they'll be followed by some Q and A. We also will have a letter that we sent to Kinder Morgan, Mr. Gavin, on March 10th, of which we asked, the Board of Selectmen had asked some seven questions. Hopefully, they will present that, cover that in their presentation. If not, the TA will be prepared to address that. We'd also like to hear from our legislators and his representatives on what their perspective is on this. Before turning the floor over to Kinder Morgan, I would like for everyone to understand that the purpose of this meeting is that, from the Board of Selectmen's perspective, our role is to protect the property rights of our citizens, to protect the sovereignty of North Reading, to ensure our environment is not compromised. Also, as best we can, our intent has been and will continue to be, the use of the full force of our elected body. Our goal is to use the information by Kinder Morgan to determine, if necessary, this board's support of or opposition to the Kinder Morgan Natural Gas Pipeline Project. There is no intention for us to make any decision tonight. And to update the public on what we have been doing in the past, the Board of Selectmen on March 10th did send a letter to Kinder Morgan, which generated this informational hearing. Also, through the Northeast Municipal Gas Pipeline Coalition, we sent a letter just recently urging to oppose any proposed tariff to pay for the natural gas infrastructure by electric customers. And we stand behind the Article 97 of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Constitution, which affords the right to clean air and water. So, thank you for coming. Kinder Morgan will make their presentation, and I want to thank them. If they're, you can, welcome, thank you for having the willingness to come forward and to present to our town. Again, thank you.
Get your signature right there. Okay. Turn it over to Kinder Morgan.
Is that where? Is that clicker? Yeah, I got it down here. There's also a pointer built into it. Second right there. Okay. Thank you. Thank you to the board for having us. My name is Steve Keaty. I work in Public and Government Affairs for Kinder Morgan. I'm here with my colleagues, Mike Lennon, who is our right-of-way manager, and John Gavin, who is our local land agent. In order to keep as much time for Q and A, I'll provide a brief update on where we are, timeline, and then Mike will go into the North Reading route and answer any questions we have regarding routing. So we are currently in the pre-filing phase. We initiated pre-filing on September 15th of 2014, and we haven't filed any state or federal permits yet. We anticipate to file both state and federal permits in the fourth quarter of 2015, right here. So over the past year, we've held approximately 80 public meetings. We're engaging with state agencies and all other impacted stakeholders. We're still refining our route. When Mike comes up to present, he'll talk about a recent route adjustment in town as a result of feedback with impacted stakeholders. And an important thing to note, we are still refining our entire project. We haven't determined yet if we're going to file a 30-inch pipe or 36-inch pipe. A 30-inch pipe would bring approximately 1.1 to 1.3 BCF per day into the region, and a 36-inch pipe would bring approximately 2.2 BCF per day. Mike, do you want to come up and talk about the map a little bit through town?
Yes. Which one is the laser? Yeah. Just like ours. Good evening. My name is Mike Lennon. I'm the right-of-way manager for the project in New England. And what Steve was referring to, we're still evaluating, based on our customer base, a 30- to 36-inch pipeline. That's referring to the main line bringing gas from its source, Pennsylvania, across New York, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, into Drakett. Once the project or the gas supply reach, good, okay, reaches Drakett, Massachusetts, at that point, there are several laterals that would deliver the gas to local distributors. And what we're talking about tonight is the Linfield lateral coming out of Drakett, down through Wilmington, across North Reading into Reading, where it ties in with the existing Tennessee Gas Pipeline to service the customer, the local distributor, which in this case is National Grid. So a main line coming across to bring gas to the region, specific laterals such as what we refer to as the Linfield lateral here, coming across North Reading to service National Grid. As you see the overview map of town, we'll get into it in a little bit more detail. Just to get your bearings, there's Interstate 93, there's the Wilmington-North Reading line, and we are proposing, for the majority of the route through town here, to co-locate with the existing New England Power Line Corridor, okay? What exactly is co-location? What we're proposing in general, and we still are in consultation with them, is to place our pipeline five feet outside of their permanent easement with overlapping permanent easement between us and the power line company and our workspace within their power line corridor. There'll be certain areas, through consultation and survey data with the utility, that we may not be able to do that because of where their towers are located, the height of their transmission lines may prohibit us from being able to do that. In other areas, we may be wholly inside of their easement. May not be the five feet outside, maybe five to 10 feet inside. As we go through more densely populated areas, we may have to completely overlap our easements. We're in the process, through our on-the-ground surveys and our consultation with landowners and the utilities, of determining that final route. We do not expect to have those answers until later this year into the fall, as Steve referenced, once we start the filing process. So at that point in time, we'll have a much more specific plan as to how we propose to cross the town, town properties, individual homeowners' properties, and commercial properties. In the meantime, what we show is a proposed 400-foot study corridor, which is highlighted in yellow on this map, and the copies of these maps are outside, folks, so anyone leaving or that doesn't have them, be sure to grab a copy. It shows the town. So again, this yellow line, in between those yellow lines represents a 400-foot study corridor. Coming through town, we anticipate, based on that, approximately 40 landowners fall within our survey range. Keep in mind, that's a full 400 feet. As we vet this thing through, we'll get down to a permanent 50-foot easement. So many of those landowners will drop out, I shouldn't say many, some of those landowners will certainly drop out of the final scope of the project, but we come in with a wide swath to gather as much survey data as possible. As you'll see, in most cases, that survey goes on both sides of the power line, so we can determine the best route. One minor change that was just approved, this route here, as it deviates coming into town, is away from the power line. We have recently changed the route to wholly follow the power line coming into town, which would eliminate some of these homes in these neighborhoods here from our 400-foot study corridor. We get to the next page, get your bearings again. This would be where we, the project leaves North Reading, comes into Reading, Camp Curtis Guild area. This is one location here, the black line is the power line corridor. As you see, through feedback with landowners in this area, we deviated from the power line, based on that feedback, because of how tightly congested that development was to the edge of the power line easement. So we adjusted that survey corridor. Again, it's still being developed, and I just wanted to give that as an example of some consultation and feedback, which has led to route adjustments. I'm sure throughout the process of this summer of doing some survey work, further consultations with the power line company, of landowners, there's sure to be many more deviations. But again, we're starting with a 400-foot study corridor, we'll narrow that down, and should be in a better position to share information with specific property owners later this year. Here's that overall project map, and as I noted briefly, the gas itself is coming from the Marcellus region, across either a 30- or 36-inch pipeline into New England, terminating at Drakett, where we then have Haverhill, Linfield, DBD laterals. So I think that's what you're looking for from me now. Did you have anything else?
No.
Okay. So, again, a very quick and crude presentation, but the goal was, I know most of the people here are somewhat familiar with the project. We'll stick around and answer as many questions as we can over the next hour or so, and we'll answer what we can. There may be some we can't answer. We'll commit to getting back to either the individual landowners or the board with follow-up information.
Sure. If I had to say, the metro Boston is one of the few areas in the United States that actually imports LNG from other parts of the world, mostly in the winter, because the current pipeline capacity isn't enough. Will this pipeline eliminate the need for importing LNG into Chelsea? And if it does eliminate them in the winter, what's going to happen to the surplus of gas?
I could talk. So there is currently LNG imported into the region, as you referenced, in the winter. Those LNG imports are occurring throughout the year for use in the winter. It's then delivered to stored facilities around New England, so that way, during the winter months, when the consumption of gas rises, as the home heating is competing with the electric generation, for example, that's when you see the biggest deficits. So there's continuous LNG import to build up those reserves for those coldest winter months. Theoretically, you know, we can't comment too much on other industries, or not other industries, other companies and their business plans, but theoretically, the development of our project and any other project would theoretically lessen the need for those projects. Market factors have already led to a reduction in LNG imports, as the Marcellus shale region that I showed on the map before has become developed over the past 10 to 7, 7 to 10 years. That domestic product is cheaper to extract, it's closer and easier to transport here, which has made the Marcellus gas much more attractive to local distributors and power generators, as opposed to transporting the gas from foreign markets at a higher price. So you've already seen a reduction in some of those imports over the past seven years or so. Theoretically, this, the build-out of the Marcellus, we see a further reduction in that.
Will there still be a surplus though, once you build the pipeline?
Will there still-
Will there be a surplus? Will you be pumping more gas into the Boston area than Boston and the Salem Power Company switching to gas? Will it entirely be used in that area?
At this point in time, the customer base that we have committed to the project is all local distribution companies, which would, again, be used locally. We are an open-access carrier. We are still in open season on this product. As we talked about, the size of the pipe and the compression facilities is yet to be determined. We'll note more definitively the answer to that in the fall, once the market is finalized. But at this point in time, all local distribution companies, as I referenced earlier, National Grid, we will have to build this pipeline through the permitting process to whatever that firm market is later this year. The way the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission works, and the way the process works, is a company can't build it and hope to sell capacity at a later date. We have to build to the capacity that is committed to those long-term contracts. At this point in time, it's only local distribution, but again, there's several more months before that filing, and if another component, LNG, for example, were to come to us with a long-term contract, we would not have the ability to turn it away. We're an open-access carrier.
I have a question. You mentioned that you had deviated the route in consultation with landowners. I'm at two Scotland Heights, and I was never consulted on that deviation. I don't think anybody else in that street was consulted. I think you just did that on your own, without talking to us about it. You refused permission to give it into our property, but there's never any consultation about that deviation at all.
Yep.
Because I think that deviation is going through severe wetlands. It's going to destroy a huge portion of the water supply. So there was no consultation in that at all.
Well, there's a combination of things. So you're right, our team, and John and others, have been out working in the communities for the past several months, reaching out to landowners, trying to learn more about their properties. Many of those people have declined to comment or refused permission for our teams to come onto their property to conduct surveys. In those cases where we do not have permission, we're not serving. I know the town has restricted us in certain cases from the town-owned lands, as an example. We're doing the best we can with publicly available data and some aerial surveys to try to get as much information as we possibly can as we route in this early stage. Again, that adjustment, from the limited feedback that we've had, and our own analysis of where we think the edge of that power line easement is, where those facilities are located, shows us that it's a tight fit through there.
I was just trying to get into deviation consultation with landowners, that's all. I mean, I was not consulted.
Well-
If anybody else was consulted, that's-
No, I understand. It's certainly, we have not had conversations with everybody. Everyone has taken a different position. Some people have shared information about their property and refused any further survey data. Other people have had no communication whatsoever. Others have granted survey permission, we were able to gain some information. So it's, we're pulling from many different sources there. Our ideal situation is to have a direct conversation with you about your preferences regarding your property, and then allow our teams of civil, cultural, environmental surveys to come through, to tell us about those wetlands, to tell us about your property corners, to see where the facilities are located on your property. Understandably, some people have said, "I don't feel comfortable doing that, I don't want to collaborate with the company." In those cases, we make the best guess that we can, with the limited amount of information that we have at this point in time. As the process continues over the next several years, people may change their opinion, we may gain more access, we might have publicly available data. Those aerial surveys I talked about, doing it at different times of the year may teach us more about the features. That route could have changed again. It will do two things. It will change the route, and it will change the construction techniques in a given area. So that's what we're trying to develop now, so that when we come back to all of the property owners later this year and into next year, we have what we think is a first-step plan as to how we construct it. Not a 400-foot-wide study corridor, a much more narrow. This is where we propose to put a 50-foot permanent easement. And at that point in time, some people may have a healthier dialogue with us, give us more information, which still could continue to lead to route adjustments. The reason we ask and encourage people to have a communication with us, that might not be the best route through that area. You may have a much better suggestion that we're ignorant to right now, or anyone in those neighborhoods, which is why we try to have a dialogue at this early stage. If you choose not to, I understand, but we will have a dialogue at some point in the future if the project goes, because perhaps when we come to you with a specific design for your property, if it were to be impacted, that may prompt a dialogue, or at least an opinion. Yep. Mike calling this, or, oh, we got a, or number two.
Just a quick question in relation to your relationship with the power company, your current relationship. Have they granted you, and do they have the ability to grant you the right to survey from their easements, first of all?
Yep.
Secondly, have you entered into any agreement for compensation for access to their easements?
Yeah.
Where you're going to be laying the pipe in? And if so, what is that compensation package? Is it on an annual basis, fee-based, or is it one-time payment, as you might be suggesting for some other property owner?
So, to answer the question first and foremost, even if the power company grants us permission to survey on their easement-
for some other property owner?
So to answer the question first and foremost, even if the power company grants us permission to survey on their easement, we cannot enter without the underlying fee owner granting permission as well. So it's a multi-layered, we're requesting permission to access the parcels from the underlying fee landowner and the power line company, okay?
Has the power company given you their okay?
They have not given us okay on all of their parcels, and let me explain...
About the parcels in North Reading?
Well, so we had, and John, you can answer me without on that one. So they did within North Reading because this was part of our original route, was the parcels through town here. We then made some major route adjustments to co-locate the majority of the overall project, which has led to a much more in-depth conversation with National Grid, where before we were talking about a handful of parcels along the Linfield lateral, now we're talking about dozens of miles across the state as a whole. So it's, we have earned permission to the majority of their parcels here in town, but we have not gotten an updated round of permissions from them based on the major route adjustments that occurred earlier this year. And so I know that's kind of a complicated answer, so...
Well, at the bottom line, it appears as though they've given you permission from their vantage point for the North Reading parcels.
As far as the folks in this concerned, yes. But without that underlying fee...
Right.
...permission from property owners, it only gets us a limited amount of access to their fee parcels.
And then is the power company in their negotiations with you seeking compensation for the use of their easements whereby you're also going to have to negotiate with the people who actually own the land?
Yes. So when we get farther along and we have developed a plan as to where our easement will be, the multi-layers, there would be a payment for the easement and workspace to the underlying fee owner, as well as an additional and separate payment to the power line company, which should be, again, as we're negotiating, it's in negotiations, but our practice is to give a one-time payment. As regards to the survey activity, we will not be compensating for survey, but where there's an exchange of information, there will most likely, and in my experience, there's some type of compensation for the review and the development of the plans that they would have to produce for us to design this.
In your experience and in Kinder Morgan's experiences in relation to dealing with the power companies, again, that would be the most obvious routes to follow...
Sure.
...with the least amount of impact or intrusion. Have they engaged or have they contracted with the fee being more than just a one-time payment?
No. No. So the last project I was on, for example, we ran with PPNL down in Pennsylvania, and we had a one-time payment to them for the running of that line. There is typically language in there that details if they have to do maintenance on their facilities versus if we have to do maintenance on theirs, and how do we exchange the rates for inspection of each other's facilities. I wouldn't term that as a recurring payment, but language in there that applies to the ongoing maintenance of each other's facilities, and because there's a cohabitation, who would compensate who in what type scenarios, but not as just a general recurring payment.
And again, in your practice, or has anybody ever asked and received any type of ongoing compensation for the value of the property that you traverse through the community?
No, not in my experience with both private property owners and with utilities, other utilities. The only time I've seen that is some state-owned interests where we, they do not have a mechanism to grant a permanent right-of-way, they would grant it via lease to a utility. And those leases might be a 20- or 30-year lease, which would be renewed, which could put it into that recurring payment that you are talking about, but not with other utilities and private landowners.
It would just appear to me that if you're going to get the, if you go and get federal approval and override the local community's desires and wishes, you know, that there should be some sort of compensation to the communities and the taxpayers and the ratepayers, you know, as far as a value assessed to the utility owned by a private company, a private enterprise, profit, for-profit enterprise, generating all that revenue for you.
Good clarification.
Millions of dollars over the years, and there's nothing other than a one-time small fee to a community or property owner.
So to a property, just to clarify, though, there is a recurring tax on the ad valorem tax on the pipeline itself, which does go to the local taxpayers in this case.
I forget what the figure was, $64 million, $68 million for the entire pipeline through Massachusetts?
Yeah, do you have the numbers for town here?
Something like that?
It's $25 million throughout Massachusetts, and I think approximately...
I was going to say, button your shirt, your heart's falling out. I mean, really, I mean, the amount of revenue that's going to be generated from that pipeline is going to be in the millions, if not billions, over a period of time, and you're offering $25 million, you know, to all these communities that are being impacted. It seems like a small pittance of a sum to a community that's being impacted and runs the risk of what may occur in relation to any type of hazardous occurrence.
Sure. No, and we are committed to working with each impacted community, whether that's fire and rescue, police departments, and parks departments for, because we understand there are both short-term and long-term impacts to our project. So we are willing and looking forward to working with North Reading on that front as well.
Can we talk a little bit about safety and, you know, concerns of those families that are butting the proposed pipeline, evaluation of property, devaluation of property as a result of a pipeline running through their backyards? And how do they get compensated for their loss in value?
So I'll start with, do you want to start and touch on safety or just get into evaluation?
Go ahead.
Yes, okay. So, and this kind of goes along with your point about the compensation, and we'll talk private properties to open with here. We would be paying for that 50-foot permanent easement, whatever the fair market value of that percentage of land on any given property owner's parcel, okay? In addition to a separate payment for temporary workspace, the goal or the benefit of co-locating with existing transmission lines is, in most cases, and I do not want to speak for any individual property, in most cases, by co-locating with existing facilities, putting an additional energy, form of energy infrastructure, in this case, a buried natural gas pipeline, will not have an effect on the valuation. However, if you were to, for example, put our pipeline in, and that parcel is currently buffered between themselves and the utility, the power line, and us placing our facilities there, cut down those trees and eliminated a buffer, that would absolutely have an impact on that property. One that we would attempt to, through consultation and survey, adjust construction techniques, try to use more of that easement to protect that buffer, because that tree buffer, even though the values of the trees themselves is not that of a timber harvest, there is a privacy buffer that goes along with it. And the third component to compensation would be damages. So if there ever was a circumstance that our construction and the location of our facilities changed the character of someone's property, therefore reducing value, the damage payment would be there to make that person whole for that damage. So that's, again, the individual early consultation to try to route this thing in the least impactful way on every individual property will work towards minimizing those impacts. But there will certainly be cases where there are, and we have to get out there and survey and work with individual property owners, and ultimately, in the years to come, determine the valuation if there needs to be a damage payment.
With due respect, though, come on, the fact that the pipeline is underground and can't be seen, and I have a barrier, right, doesn't mean that my property, and I'm speaking for those citizens that, in my community that I represent, doesn't, doesn't mean that when they go to sell their property, that it's going to have the same value as it had today before the pipeline was put in. It just doesn't, it doesn't fly.
Well, so...
You're dreaming.
I'm not dreaming. I'm giving you a generalization, and I acknowledge that there may be case-by-case situations. And certainly during the construction period where you have equipment and you have disruption on a property, there would be an impact. But this line here is our existing facility, okay? And as you see, the development of these neighborhoods in the neighboring town of Reading and Linfield, excuse me, this is Reading, and this is Linfield, and you see the same development down here. Housing and development have come right up to the edge of the existing easement. And this property here, and we have studies that show this, and if you go to our website on the frequently asked question, this valuation of this property versus this property here, there is no impact to the value, and there's no impact to the assessment. They are treated the same. Again, I understand that proposing new infrastructure at the time would cause someone to have concern about purchasing a property with that type of disruption. But as this area here shows, and it's all throughout New England, the hundreds of miles of pipeline that Tennessee Gas owns, we do not see that devaluation, and the development comes right up to the edge of the easements, once it's buried in the ground and operating safely.
What's the size of...
She's going to jump out of the chair here, I know.
What's the size of that pipeline?
Well, just to clarify, we're proposing a 20...
No, I know what you're proposing.
A 20-inch pipeline there.
One you just made a reference to.
John, I think that's a 16 there?
It's a 16.
Yeah, a 16-inch pipeline. Yep. So as far as pipeline goes, a comparable size, comparable pressure. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. With all due respect to you, I know it's your job. First of all, my neighborhood was...
Excuse me, would you, excuse me.
So I don't like that.
Ma'am, please state your name and address.
Oh, I'm Teddy Woodbury. I live at 7th Damon Street. And then in the middle of the winter, you had a meeting where we were supposed to be able to speak to FERC, and you still held it in the middle of a blizzard, and FERC was not there because they couldn't make it up from Washington. So I don't like that. I don't like the research I've done with how many explosions your company has had, and the fact that gas is not supposed to be near electricity, and you plan to run it not only behind our properties, you're running it right behind the town substation. That worries the heck out of me.
Understand.
That's why I've got the nerve to speak to you, because I am terrified, and I don't want an explosion with Kinder Morgan saying, "I'm sorry," to have all our hoses blown up. We have wetlands out there, we have a vernal pool, we have Native American artifacts. We live there. We deal with National Grid's easement as it is now. Nobody told us that in the future, a billion-dollar company was going to be able to come in and just get all kinds of permits and just go all through our property and change everything. And I am worried sick about the safety and the fact that it's going right by the town substation, and I thank you for listening to me.
No, and thank you for your comments there. Understandably, as projects like these are proposed and people start, and you've taken a lot of initiative to start to do some of that research, I always ask people, don't necessarily go to Kinder Morgan's website to hear what we have to say about it, or what our studies say on valuation. Don't necessarily go to an opposition website to see what their studies say. Find the permitting agencies, those quote-unquote "neutral" parties, to see what they have to say statistically about safety in the co-location of natural gas pipelines and transmission lines. It is quite common. So I know your comment, and I don't mean to correct you, but you said that you can't put natural gas next to electricity, it's problematic. And you can, and there's, what it is, is there's additional steps that need to be taken.
And we have heard that they're not kept, that they're put in and then nobody checks on them.
Well, okay, so...
I don't know if this is true.
I understand.
I'm telling you what you heard.
So go to, my recommendation is, all natural gas pipelines, interstate natural gas pipelines are governed under the Federal Department of Transportation, and PHMSA is the, P-H-S-M-A, is the specific entity within the DOT that governs the regulations that you're talking about, the AC mitigation and the cathodic protection needed to protect pipe if it's in close proximity to transmission lines or going through a wetland to keep the moisture from corroding the steel. Those are the agencies, as well as the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, that monitor, set the guidelines, and hold companies accountable for their maintenance. So it's, I understand, it's easy for...
Why does a billion-dollar company have to take the cheapest route that's the most invasive?
It's actually not the cheapest route by far. One of the original routes that we had across Massachusetts was a more traditional route for natural gas infrastructure, which was put it out in the middle of the woods. Fewer landowners, you don't have to deal with a cathodic protection if you're in high and dry ground, and avoid transmission lines so you don't have to do the AC mitigation. That would be the cheapest. Routing through a transmission line adjacent to residential areas is going to cause additional layers to protect the pipe and alternate construction techniques to minimize what we're doing. And I know a lot of folks will go on-site and say, "What does it take to put in a 20-inch pipeline or a 16-inch pipeline?" And they'll see videos as if they were out in Oklahoma, because where they have the space, they'll use it. We will not be using those type of construction techniques where you lay out multiple joints at a time, weld them and put them in a ditch. We won't have that kind of workspace through here. There'll be what we call residential construction or stovepipe, one joint in at a time to minimize the amount of workspace that we need. So again, make sure we're, when you're doing your research, you're looking at actual comparable as to what will happen. And I understand, it's hard, you're learning about that. FERC is a big part of that. I can say, and Steve can say, everything we want to to you tonight, we are representing the company. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and you're right, they didn't make it up to the meeting because of the snow. They will be hosting...
Change it to a...
Well, they're coming, they're coming. So there are scoping meetings, which are going to be hosted by the federal government, occurring July?
The summer.
Sometime this summer.
The dates and locations have yet to be determined, but there'll be 14 across the entire route of the pipeline.
So that's an opportunity for, and you'll get an invitation, anyone that's a directly impacted landowner, the towns, the community wire, will get invitations to those formal scoping meetings where you'll have a chance to give testimony and express your concerns directly to the agency that will be permitting this project. So while they typically do attend the open houses, it's not a requirement that they be there. Those are hosted by the company to give people an idea of what we're proposing. This is also another casual, theoretically informal way for us to share and learn from you tonight. And then the FERC scoping meetings, which will occur this summer, are a formal venue for folks to go on record, for towns to go on record and express their concerns and opinions about the project, and as specific to a routing issue at your house or the overall debate about fossil fuels, or whether there's LNG components that aren't in the best interest of New England. The whole myriad of issues will be open in that case. I recommend that rather than the wait, just in closing, rather than the wait for the FERC scoping meetings, anyone in this room has an opportunity now to go to FERC.gov and...
I don't have it.
Oh, I'm sure you have, okay, good. It's a good opportunity to follow the project, see what's been posted, and if you've seen, you or anyone else can post any comment to the project, pro or con, and it's posted on there. So the debate is raging online and will continue to rage at the scoping meetings, and as I know in your interaction with the select board here in town, there will be much debate about this project going forward. We're here to share right now what Kinder Morgan's proposed to do, kind of give you experiences to how we've done it in the past.
Doesn't mean everybody at the end of the night will walk out here saying, "This is a great idea, I support this project." But hopefully we'll answer some basic questions, develop the process, and the debate will continue on for years to come. Kind of a long answer, I'm sorry. Does one of the select board want to do the, I don't want to play favorites on who wants to go on.
I'll get back.
Yes, I just have a comment.
Please.
My name is Katie Mon, and I live on Damon Street. I want to ask you, I want to ask our elected town officials, and I want to ask our elected state officials, if anyone saw the 5 o'clock news tonight. Big flash, natural gas pipeline explosion, Dallas, the whole screen was a ball of flames. And we're supposed to feel good about you coming to North Reading close to a substation to boot, right? Did you see it?
Yes, I did.
We see it more and more and more on the TV. What company is that? That that happened tonight in Dallas?
I saw it this morning. I haven't seen the follow-ups of it, and this morning's report, it wasn't identified what it was.
As Kinder Morgan, Steve Woodbury demonstrated, has Kinder Morgan ever been convicted of a felony?
I can't answer that. I know people often ask, has Kinder Morgan ever been cited for safety violation, for example? And there have been incidents, and Kinder Morgan posts on their website their safety record. As I referenced earlier, you can also go to DOT and the PHMSA arm of DOT where they post safety records. Kinder Morgan outperforms the industry in those safety criteria.
So you don't know the answer?
But as far as a felony, that would be a very extreme situation, and find that kind of criminal negligence, I'm not aware of it.
Gentleman in the back, state your name.
Joe Vino, 11 Rock Street. I have a question. If I looked that map correctly outside, it looks like you may be going across private property on a number of... it looks like you may be going across private property on a number of parcels on Coal Spring Road, on Rock Street, which is down in that area.
I'm one of those properties.
Pardon me?
I'm one of those properties.
Okay. My question is, what if you get to a landowner and says, "No, you're not going there," what happens? Can they be forced to allow this?
Yeah, and I'll answer, but to clarify, another group perhaps at the town put up those larger display board maps, those are not Kinder Morgan's maps, but in all, they seem fairly accurate, and I only noticed one discrepancy. So, for purposes of conversation, let's, I assume you will look at the bigger maps, but make sure you get a copy of the Kinder Morgan maps, the smaller ones there, and if anybody needs a follow-up, I'll be John afterwards.
Yeah, that neighborhood will be important.
Okay, so that is one of the ones to be, so with the update-
Well, excuse me, sir, if I may, let's just forget about the map.
Okay.
If you come to a private property, you have to go through, across, and they say, "No," but what happens then? Can they be forced to allow it?
So, Kinder Morgan is a private company, cannot force anyone, just like we can't get on your properties for survey, we cannot, in and of ourselves, force ourselves on for survey, or force anyone to grant us easement. However, this fall, as Stephen mentioned, there's scoping meetings with FERC coming up over the summer, we plan to file our application and our permits. That will begin a process with the federal government, who has the authority through the Natural Gas Act. If at the end, a multi-year process, including consultations with individual landowners, the federal government may issue a certificate of public convenience and necessity. If the federal government issues that as it relates to this project, that could allow some of the powers of the federal government to flow through the company, to work with a landowner, or to gain access to a property. Again, a multi-year process, private companies do not have the authority or the rights to do that, but if the federal government were to issue that certificate, it could flow through to the company to gain an easement.
So, and I'm not trying to be wise here, the answer is yes. They could be forced to allow it to their property.
The FERC, FERC could, yes.
FERC, yeah, okay, I'm just curious. A landowner was adamant, said, "No," they could be forced.
So, some of the things we do to avoid that situation, it happens very rarely, and it happens very rarely because, right now, we're talking theoretical concepts. But as we get more information from the power line company, from individual landowners, will does it develop a route that's not as egregious as it looks to you folks? Again, we've got a line on a map of a four-foot wide corridor, and we don't have a whole lot of answers right now. As we get farther along the process, we'll have more information, more information to share with you, we'll obtain feedback from every individual landowner, which will allow us to make route adjustments, limit workspace where we need to, acquire more workspace from people that are looking for compensation, to develop a route that minimizes impacts. We may not reach accord with everyone.
No, that's-
But, you know, we will get to a point where we have more information and can speak more intelligently, and hopefully that leads to a productive dialogue.
Yes.
I'm Beth Thompson from Marblehead Street. I'm looking, I think that it came in Morgan map, the big one.
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
And on the legend, it says that there's an existing TGP pipeline, but I don't see it.
If you go to page two-
I see it on this section.
Yes.
But I don't see it on the other section. I would like to know how the present pipelines go through this property, not the page that you have up, the previous page.
The first one, that showed that one right there.
So, this, our Linfield, let me go back a few, get your bearings. We come into Drake it up here with the main line, this, follow me here, forgive my shakes, this is the Linfield lateral, and right here, it enters North Redding, comes across town, and delivers to that point there in Linfield with-
I understand that.
This point right here, which is our existing line.
No, I don't think so. I think it comes down through the top of Marblehead Street, goes across Boston Street and Middleton, through the high tension lines, going out towards Peabody, and connects further up.
Up this way?
Yeah. You're in the, you're in the top end of North Redding here.
Yep.
Sort of very small section up off of Marblehead Street, which is much further up.
Northeast section of the community.
And the line, the line goes-
Where would it be on here?
Through the high tension lines in Middleton, and off through Peabody. So, it's further-
So, that's, just to clarify, good point, my local, that's the Maritimes line, sir?
It's up there.
Go ahead, go ahead, point it out, though, that green line, I'll-
It's somewhere right in there, and goes across into Middleton, and when you're on Boston Street, you see the high tension lines go across, I believe it goes right out through there.
It's been there since the 90s, I believe.
Right, so that's the Maritimes line. It's a different pipeline company?
Yes, that's not my question.
Okay.
My question is, I thought the original gas line came south along Route 28, and I don't, if that is what is being suggested by the existing TGP pipeline, this fine black line here, it doesn't make sense to me, and I also need to know on the first page where this line is coming from.
On this first, this here?
Kind of through Redding, it shows, that's why it's completely south.
Well, here, this is Wilmington here now, here's the Wilmington-
I'm looking at the existing, not the proposed.
Yeah.
Right here.
That's Redding, Redding-Linfield.
Yep. Redding-Linfield, Beth. Group Camp Curtis Guild. So, this, this line here takes gas to the north shore, up this way?
East St. Louis?
Yes, and back down to Boston. The other one, one of the gentlemen in the front row was talking about, is the Maritimes line, which is a different transmission line, yeah. But to clarify, this Linfield lateral that we're proposing to build is bringing the new gas from Drake, Massachusetts, down to this point here, where it intersects with Tennessee Gas Pipeline's existing infrastructure to deliver to National Grid.
Then, a follow-up question. By the way, thank you for having a public meeting today. I appreciate that.
Thanks for coming.
The next question, the question that follows it is, why can't you use the present geography of the current pipeline?
Great question. And, where's the overview map?
Last slide.
Oh, last slide. We get that a lot. Bear with me while I get the overview map. Oh, okay. So, as you can see, this black line here, coming into Massachusetts from New York, the blue and purple is the new route, this black line here, you see all this existing infrastructure up to the state, to all the places we're talking about going. The first step for the company to say, "Well, let's get the gas out of Pennsylvania, deliver it to market through our existing systems." The first line was built in the 50s, another one in the 80s, and then the third line in the 90s. So, the easement that we have through that area, especially in this area of Massachusetts, is currently holding three pipelines, and the development in those areas, kind of like I showed you on this map, has come right up to the edge of those easements, where in our evaluation, and this is part of our FERC filing, one of the alternatives we looked at, is to say, "We can't put a fourth line in here without taking down homes," and that's something that we do not do and cannot do. So, the development of the past 60 years in these areas has seen the development of homes, businesses, right up to the edge of our easement, which already has three pipelines. There's simply not enough room to do that. Similarly, with the smaller lines, where we had smaller easements, the congestion there, but even following our existing facilities up from, on a lateral line, the development has come too much to the edge of the easements for us to be able to do that. I know that's hard for folks that live along the utility line to hear, because they look at it and say, "Well, jeez, this utility line, there's pretty much development right up to the edge of that right now." The difference is, if we are able to successfully co-locate, and again, co-locate meaning get as much of our permanent easement and all of our temporary workspace inside that transmission line, where the pipe and the vehicles will travel, we think at this point that we would be able to do so while minimizing impacts on the outside. I don't have a firm answer, folks. We have to consult with the utility company, find out not only where their towers are, what the height of those towers is, and what the voltage running through those lines. Because if there's enough voltage, and they've only, they're only 30 feet off the ground, but they require a 15-foot clearance, we might not have room for our equipment to go through there. All part of the consultation with the power line company now, as we develop this. So, I hope that answers why we've chosen the route we're on now, as opposed to some of those other existing lines which are built up on.
Mrs. Mandapelli, did you have a question?
If I could, of the 400 homeowners that you mentioned where you're doing your section-
Forty, it's forty.
I thought you said 400 when we started.
In town here? It's a 400-foot stud, good clarification, thank you. So, yellow line to yellow line is a 400-foot study corridor?
Yes.
We, based on our initial assessment, we anticipate 40 property owners, both private, municipal, and commercial, along this route.
Which is, when you're saying that, it's where the pipeline will go through, property the pipeline will go through.
We're saying 400, we're saying 40 property owners fall within this 400-foot band, which is three miles through town.
So-
But, once we narrow it down to 50 feet, obviously, we would anticipate being fewer than those 40 landowners.
So, of the 40 that you, that it'll affect-
Yeah.
Before they fall out.
With the study, yeah, with the study, yeah.
How many of those have you actually spoken with, and how many have granted you permission, and how many have refused your permission to survey?
I don't, I don't have the, John, if you have ballpark numbers, you don't feel comfortable. So, we've, with who we think the owner is, we haven't completed title work, but based on the publicly available data, all of those people, those 40, will have at least received an attempted phone call from John, or at a minimum, a letter.
Typically, it runs about 40 percent. It's a pretty-
Okay, so just rough numbers, though, that, so-
Difference from town to town.
Yep.
Honestly, you sent those letters out, you know, quite a long time ago. You should know by now, I made those letters, people responded, and gave you permission to do any of that talk.
And I can follow up with the town on quantified numbers, and just, I didn't mean to put them on the spot, it just, you know, it wasn't a question. We know there's about 40 land, 40 landowners, about 40 percent of those roughly have granted us permission. Obviously, we know that the town has not.
So, so you believe some of those are going to fall out in terms of a final proposal, but you're actually filing the FERC documentation this summer, you said, which is now. So, you're-
In the fall will be the formal, or the pre-filing process now. So, we'll do another pre-filing in July. This is just as part of that FERC docket, keeping everybody updated. This is the latest route, this is what we think we're doing. This is the customers that we have signed up, National Grid, but we won't do a formal filing until this fall.
So, in terms of the proposal, although it doesn't run through, you're saying 40 homeowners?
And businesses, yeah.
And businesses, and municipal owners.
Yeah.
It also abuts property, and you talked a little bit about this, and I want to get some clarification, because people are concerned about this. You don't, you're not factoring in abutting properties, properties abutting, because you talked about development up to the line, but there's a complete distinction between houses already developed, which a line is now going to abut, versus property being developed up to a line, eyes wide open, knowing that, you know.
Yeah.
One comes before the fact, one comes after the fact. We're concerned with the after the fact, these already existing neighborhoods that are going to abut it. Do you consider those neighborhoods in terms of any kind of compensation for?
Yeah. So, we think we account for those abutting neighborhoods by starting with the wide survey corridor, so that everybody that would fall within close proximity to the line, even if they're not ultimately impacted, we've made them aware of it. We've given them an opportunity to engage with us. So, let's say, and this is probably town property, but let's say you had an undeveloped parcel there. By including that wide study corridor, even if the pipeline is going to be, the proposed pipe winds up on the south of the power line, we've included that person in our notification, so that if they do have future development plans, and we've had many developers come to us, and I can't say in North Redding specifically, who will say, "Hey, just so you know, I've got a subdivision plan, I've been working with the town planners for the past two years, I'm about to get this thing approved, I need to know what's going on," leads to a dialogue, probably could lead to a route adjustment. We've had a few of our lines, our proposed study line, adjusted to run rather than through the middle of an undeveloped lot, which would be a damaged situation where you've now made it undevelopable, moving it to the edge of that property line. Roads that have yet to been, to be built, we might, if the developer has a subdivision plan, we'll adjust our route to run under that to-be-built road, and do it at a depth of cover, so that there's minimal impacts to that division in the future. So, that's, we think we've covered it for the most part. Part of this dialogue, and part of the FERC scoping meetings, and part of the advertisement we do, is if there happens to be somebody that's just outside that we've missed, hopefully we give them an opportunity to come talk to us. If you're aware of those specific situations, as a community, please share them with us, so that we're aware as we design and route this.
So, how many of those property parcels have you actually contacted in terms of what you're reviewing now? Have you contacted any of those abutting parcels?
We've, everybody within the 400-foot study corridor.
How many, how many parcels is that?
So, 40 parcels, on average, are probably equate, rough numbers, I'll have to get to the specific, on average, you'd probably have 55 to 60 parcels, which, because I know that the town, for example, owns three or four parcels. I know the town of Wilmington has one or two in town here. So, that would be two landowners, which might account for six parcels.
Okay.
So, I, again, forgive me for not being able to speak more precisely, but this is one of those action items that we can follow up with you on specific counts.
Just one or two more follow-up, just to follow up on what Mr. Vino was asking you. So, you get, you get your final proposal, you know the identification of the parcel owner.
Yep, yep.
You know the parcel owner isn't going to say yes, you get your certificate from FERC, you proceed to condemnation of the land, and then taking, or what's your next step?
Well, a consultation throughout the entire process. So, there, again, my past experience, there are people that have said, "I philosophically am opposed to natural gas, or pipeline coming through my property, and I will not cooperate with the company." It's a rare circumstance, but I've had people do that. Yet, I've had a dialogue with them throughout the entire process. So, even though they've made it crystal clear to me, they do not intend to willingly grant an easement to the company, they have still opted to share information about their property, in this particular case, where their well was, where he wanted to expand his barn. I know there's a rural examples that don't necessarily apply here. But, we, there was a dialogue with the company all the way through, even while that federal process was occurring simultaneously, we were still designing the pipeline, so that it would be minimally impactful, even though there was a philosophical disagreement. Does that make sense? So, the dialogue will continue up through, even if that federal process is occurring simultaneously, as long as people are willing to engage with the company.
Could we hear from a state rep, state senator, and congressional representative, as far as where they are, what concerns they may have?
Yes.
Can you talk a little about Spectra line, and what impact that has to you, the customer base?
Sure, I can talk generally, sorry. I can talk generally, I'm not an expert on their project, but what we are proposing is 400-mile pipeline to respond to the regional, the regional needs of New England for additional natural gas. Traditionally, Spectra and our Tennessee Gas Pipeline system have served different customers. You know, our anchor shippers on this project are Berkshire Gas, Liberty Utilities up in New Hampshire, National Grid. So, we look at as two separate projects, and we believe that, you know, both projects may be needed as well, but we traditionally serve those different customer bases in different regions of the state and New England.
And could you speak to Article 97 process, and in a timeframe for potentially filing an Article 97, which is obviously a legislative approval to go through certain types of land in the Commonwealth? So, for those that don't know, in the state of Massachusetts, and you might be more versed than I am, but there are, what's referred to as Article 97. And so, those lands which are held in the public interest, and North Redding has a few parcels in town that would qualify as that, there's also Mass Division of Conservation of Recreation. So, anytime a utility project such as ours proposes to obtain an easement across those properties, as those parcels are held now, it's in conflict with the Article 97 process, we would have to go through, as a company, we'd identify all of those lands, and like I said, there are some here in town. We would then- We would then have to request or go through a legislative process in Massachusetts where specific legislation would be granted, or not granted, to allow an easement to be placed on those lands. And I think it requires 2/3 of the legislature to approve that. So, that would be a process that we, as a company, would have to go through simultaneous to the federal permitting process. And I'll jump ahead. Many people have said, well, can't you just go through the federal process and ignore the state process? We will not be doing that. We are on record as committing to going through the SEC process in New Hampshire and the Article 97 process in Massachusetts, which would ultimately require 2/3 of the state legislature to approve that list of Article 97 lands.
And if the Article 97 were... Was adversely viewed by the legislature, where does that leave your proposal?
Where would it leave the proposal?
Basically, if... Well, ideally, from your perspective, Article 97 is approved, or now we'll just go to a different route, just out of curiosity, what the...
Well, we've already tried to do that. So, thank you for clar... We developed a parcel, somebody before said, the cheapest route, right? And so, through our initial desktop analysis last year, we chose that route in rural areas, through the woods, the easiest construction. As we researched that route, there was multiple Article 97 prospectives. And in our consultation with elected officials and the agencies and towns and conservation groups which controlled those parcels, they said to us, absolutely not. You'll never get disapproved through the legislature. Don't even legis... You'll never... Don't even try it. It's not a good route. These lands are protected and held. You need to find... You need to avoid these properties or find a better way to go through. We've avoided as many as we've could. However, with the co-location, it is the company's opinion, yet to be voted on, that we would still pursue Article 97's approval, so long as we're co-located with those Article 97 processes. And we've demonstrated the ability to minimize impacts by utilizing the existing easements that is there. We would still have to go through the process, but it's our belief in early consultation with the agencies, not every town, but some towns, that if we can do that, it's much more palatable and much more likely to get approved. I can't speak for the mood of the legislature, legislature a year or two from now when they vote, but that's our intent. After our initial consultations, we didn't have a route that was permissible or would be approved. Now, we think we've got a better route. There'll certainly be more commentary on the route as we go forward.
And when would you envision filing something?
I don't have a timetable on that.
I don't think... Yet to be determined.
Yeah.
You said simultaneously with the FERC?
Well, the ongoing consultation... So, New Hampshire has an SEC process, which is not a specific vote, but a permitting process. So, this fall, when we file with FERC, we'll begin to file our permits with Massachusetts. DEP, MEPA, the other agencies, which will essentially begin the evaluation. When we actually file the legislation for Article 97, that'll have as much to do with those agencies and the legislature. I can't say whether... Certainly wouldn't be this year. Whether it would be '16 or '17, to be determined. But, the permitting process within the state would begin simultaneous to the FERC.
Just as a follow-up to Representative... Can you avoid Article 97?
Well, it...
Can you avoid it?
Can we avoid it entirely and still get the gas to that grid? No. We've looked at it. What it would do, well, anything's possible.
Can you bypass the legislative?
Oh, no, 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 no. We've committed to following the legislative...
You've committed to it.
Yeah.
When you say you've committed to it...
It's more of a legal question as opposed to a...
Are you required to do it? So, my question is, can you bypass the legislative process?
It's never been done.
So, the answer is...
It's been committed to. I would think that would be a question more appropriately answered by FERC, as to the legality of, could it be? Is there a process to do it? I'm on record...
If you find it to be an obstacle, is there a way around it for you? And is it FERC?
FERC would be the way, but the company has already been on record as stating that we intend to follow that process.
Can I just jump in here? I apologize, Steve, but I guess the question, I think, comes down to, does the power of eminent domain that results from the issuance of a certificate of public convenience and necessity have the ability to override the failure of an Article 97 vote by the legislature?
I'll let you comment. I've answered as best I can. I don't think that's ever happened before.
Or there's ever been a case, but I will definitely follow up with you on that. It's a good question, and I don't have any...
It's a very important question, and we'd be curious to know what your research yields as we research the issue ourselves.
The only other question, I think in the map you put up, that part of it goes through Camp Curtis. And does that, as a military facility, have any other issues that you need to address in terms of sign-off by, whether it's the National Guard or...
Yeah, so there would be, you know, the Guard would have their own permitting and process to grant it. I can say, it's not of great concern to us now, because of the classification of the facility and the fact that our existing infrastructure is already there. So, we already have a relationship with the existing line with that entity. We don't anticipate any trap... If we were going through a more sensitive military installation...
You're going through Hanscom Air Force Base, I...
It'd be a different scenario. We've actually run lines to feed Hanscom as part of the redevelopment portions. But, in this case, we don't anticipate... But, there could be military installations that it would, not in this case. Yeah?
Jeff?
Time, I think we're beyond our hour, but I'd like Seth Maltin's... Oh, you're not finished? I'm sorry.
I apologize. I apologize. So, question one, just to clarify, for this lateral, we're talking about a 20-inch pipeline, correct? Diameter?
Thirty into a 20.
Understood. And which leads to the next question. What do we assume the pressure to be in the pipeline?
The overall for the 30 or 36-inch going to direct it would be about 1460 ESI. For the Winfield lateral, I don't have a number for you, but I can follow up on the exact number.
So, given the reduction in the diameter, I'm curious as to whether we'd anticipate an increase in the pressure?
No.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
So, there might be a step-down?
Less than, yes.
Okay. All right, so...
The average is 50, but I don't want to commit to that now. We don't have the customer... We don't have the customer volumes finalized at this point in time, which would determine some of that.
Right.
But, it would definitely have to be less than the 1480.
So, that's a great segue to my next question. In the pre-filing letter that you sent to FERC, you indicated a couple of things. One, there were estimates of about 6 billion cubic feet per day need projected in New England through 2020, increasing to about 10 billion cubic feet per day in 2035. Based on those numbers and your estimate that this system maxes out at about 2.2 billion cubic feet per day, is it reasonable to assume that all of this gas will be consumed in New England? Because also in that letter, you make reference to the potential that it would be routed to Canada, I presume through Canaport, for potential export. So, I'm curious, as we sit here tonight, knowing everything that we know, can we presume that all of the gas would be consumed in New England, given the fact that we have a 6 BCF a day need, and this will supply approximately 2.2 at its maximum throughput? Will it all be consumed in New England?
Sure. No, it's a great question and analysis. So, what we are... We have decided it's either going to be a 36-inch pipe, which would have scalability to 2.2 BCF per day, or a 30-inch pipe, which would be approximately 1.2 or 1.3 BCF per day. As Mike mentioned, under the Natural Gas Act, Kinder Morgan can't discriminate based on customers. We currently have zero LNG customers, so it's all local New England LDCs that are committed to it. But, under the Natural Gas Act, we can't discriminate based on where the gas is going to go. So, if there was an LNG customer who could commit a long-term contract similar to a National Grid or Liberty Utilities in New Hampshire, we could not discriminate against them, no. But, there are no customers right now.
And similarly, are you allowed to prioritize in terms of who the offtakers will be? In other words, is a priority... Do you have the ability, or does the FERC have the ability, to give priority to New England consumers, given the fact that they bear the burden of the pipeline?
So, we'll... Two-part answer to that, if you don't mind. When we contract with the local distributors, in this case, National Grid, they're signing up for firm capacity, so they could not be trumped if, say, five years from now, it became more lucrative to sell to an LNG that we are an open-access carrier. There could not be displacement while that current contract is in place. And keep in mind, right now, the LDCs are the only group, there's talk of electric generation, but the LDCs right now are the only ones capable of having a stable enough market and a business model that allows that 20-year contract that we would be looking for. So, from a business model, that's what we have to go by. FERC and the permitting process, you know, speculate. We have an LDC base now, and if LNG components came into this and wound up speaking for 50 percent of the capacity on the line, thus getting minimized... Perceived minimization of the benefit directly to New England, that's the scoping meetings, the permitting process, the Article 97 would be... It would be an uphill battle, wouldn't it? To think that a project of this size could get it through the local, state, and federal approvals with that much, 50 percent of its capacity spoken for overseas? I don't see that happening. Again, it's... If this project is going to be permissible, it's going to be with at least the vast majority of it being local distribution, New England benefit, Nat Grid is the LDC. Probably went up a little bit more of my opinion and my experience with these things. You guys, as elected officials, would certainly have a voice in that process, and I'm sure you'd hear if you're constituents, from your constituents, if an LNG component monopolized this.
I'd go a step further and suggest that if there's unmet baseload need of any kind, it would be very difficult to get approval for a pipeline that's bringing in 2.2 BCF a day, if it winds up being that. And I apologize, Jeff, for just a couple more questions, one being, as regard to the alternatives analysis that you'll likely have to complete in order to get a public certificate, is there contemplated or required any kind of a discussion with the folks at Spectra as to the possibility of co-location or partnership or increasing pipeline or looping or increasing compression capacity to be able to meet the need without the additional pipeline capacity that you contemplate?
I'll speak from experience again, if you don't mind. That, technically, Spectra is a competitor. So, both companies, right now, are moving forward with plans which they think serve their customers' best and give them the maximum amount of capacity into the region. There have been many cases where FERC, while evaluating a project, evaluates it in the totality of the region with all the projects that are out. And most recently, John, you were on the PNTGS and Maritime, the line that comes out that we were talking about earlier that you brought up. When that project crosses the border into Maine, 20 years ago, FERC required both of those companies to share facilities in the line. So, there's a local, specific example where two companies were proposing their own lines, their own capacity. FERC evaluated them in the totality and combined the two. As Stephen said, based on Spectra's footprint now, serving a different region, just to show you, it's on here, but the Spectra is the light blue pipeline through southeastern Massachusetts, where we're proposing to come in for the north. That direct co-location, as we're designed now, is less likely than the main scenario. However, could the FERC and the regulators look at it and say, reduce the size of ours, reduce the size of theirs, or share some joint facilities in eastern Mass? It's absolutely been done and is a huge possibility, I would say. You know, I can't speak for FERC. These are the type of questions, when you come to the scoping meeting, that FERC hosts this summer, and I'm sure you guys will do that as well, they would be the ones to comment on that. Right now, we are proposing what we think is the best, independent of Spectra. They're doing the same. Whether there is some type of marriage later on, it's been done.
Great. And I apologize, but one final question. Could you speak a little bit to the ramifications of the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act and what you may or may not have to do to comply with it? And again, with a similar question regarding Article 97, if you're unable to gain compliance with the Wetlands Protection Act, does the eminent domain power, or is there any superseding power vested in you as a result of the certificate of public convenience and necessity?
Yeah. So, short answer, we would be applying for those permits at the state level with regards to the wetlands. In our experience, we have never not been able to obtain those from a state agency. There have been times where the federal government has intervened between a company and a specific wetland issue, not the permits as a whole, but a specific area where the company has a constructibility issue in terms of how the permit is being proposed or issued. So, the FERC would serve as an arbitrator in that case. But, all FERC certificates that I've been a part of have had deference to those state permits, to the point where we've been issued that certificate of convenience and public necessity with a list of conditions. Most know that we have to work it out with that specific agency. I've never seen a bypass. There never will be a bypass. There have been very specific examples, in my experience, where there's been a meeting of the minds to say, you might have had a local permitting authority that does not have a lot of pipeline experience, so they were looking at it from their perspective, the gas company was looking at it from theirs. And so, a larger body, a specific example as the arbitrator there was the Corps of Engineers, right? So, they have experience on both sides, wound up helping to mitigate an answer there. Just personal experience.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming tonight. Thank you for the information. It's very helpful.
I'd like Representative Seth Maltin's office. Do you have any questions?
Appreciate that, but no, the state reps and actually you all have covered everything I came to ask, so it's impressive that you guys are as well-read as you are, so...
He has a mic.
Yeah. I think he has a mic. You're happy with what you heard, isn't it?
Yeah, absolutely.
What I'm hearing.
Has Congressman Maltin taken a position, though? Has Congressman Maltin taken a position yet on this? Or which way is he...
No, he has not taken a position. And we're still very much, as Kinder Morgan has highlighted and as has everyone else here, that this is early in the process, right? So, we're still... We're still very interested in listening and hearing how the result of the impact statements, the environmental impact statements specifically, and also what our colleagues in the State House have to say about the prospects. So, we're... Our big concern is making sure that the transparency that's been demonstrated tonight continues going forwards.
Thank you. I have one more question, and this gentleman right here.
It's a full-time change of route. It's the only maps I've seen so far, by like Sean Duggan's Central Street Road. I've seen this map, and I've seen the larger maps that are very vague. Is there a time when you're going to release an updated projection of where you've changed the path of this?
Yeah. So, that area specifically on the Wilmington border, that route adjustment was just approved last week. I see us in a position to be able to contact landowners with updated mapping. Give me about a week and a half, two weeks, and we'll be in touch with that specific mapping for you, sir.
Just a little question. So, the mapping that you have out there was from a consultant who was providing information in the town regarding the environmental areas.
Yeah.
If you could feed us data regarding the new route, any additions or deletions in route, so we could probably map it.
Sure. So, you'll commit to doing that when we get you the updated lime work? Sure, sure. So, they're taking the lime work and producing their maps. We'll have a map for the landowners, but you can share that lime work with them.
That would be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, I think we're really running out of time. We have a number of other items on our agenda.
If any landowners want to beat us up in the hallway, specific questions, we'd be happy to deal with that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Thanks for having us.
I want to thank...
No one has been... You've spoken to everyone else, but two landowners that have been raised a meaningful meeting.
We've allowed as many questions as we possibly could. We're well beyond the hour.[1700.12] well beyond the hour. I want to thank you all for coming. I want to thank Kinder Morgan for making the presentation.
Those questions can be asked out. You're going to?
Well, if there's any landowners or folks that have routing issues, stick around. Thank you.
Well, it's going to take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
I.
I can go back and look.
I, I don't know if, I, I think the, uh, the Veterans Committee, I don't think it has a limit. I'd have to double check, but I don't think it has a limit.
Mr. Chairman, we believe that this is the last regular vacancy on the committee at this point.
It is, okay.
He is the only candidate?
Yes, there is.
There is, there is a limit.
A few years ago.
Right, we're at it.
Right, okay.
He's the only candidate?
Yes, he's the only candidate.
So we'll do it on just a, a simple, uh, majority vote. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Okay, we wanted to discuss the summer meeting schedule. Everybody by now maybe have made summer vacation plans, including myself. So, we're scheduled to meet on the twenty ninth. Am I correct?
We're scheduled for, uh, water rate hearing on Monday, June twenty second. This upcoming meeting. Depending upon the availability of, uh, Mr. DePulio, we may request a meeting for the twenty ninth.
Okay, so, uh...
But hopefully that will be taken up on the twenty second.
Everyone's all set on the twenty second, right?
Right.
Okay, twenty ninth, if we need a meeting?
Well, it is my birthday, it should be a holiday, but if we have to.
Is it in your contract?
Yeah, it's in my contract.
It will be basically an executive session meeting if we have it.
I came on my birthday, if that has any bearing.
Then we get into July. So, uh, we would normally be meeting on the sixth. I am going to be away.
I'm gonna be away.
I am gonna be out.
Out of town on business myself.
Be away that week.
I'm gonna be out of town on business. Till Thursday evening. Monday through Thursday.
We have, uh, if you really go back and look at all the meetings we've had, we've had a tremendous amount of meetings.
Mm-hmm.
With no real break. If it's at all possible, is there a way we can just maybe break until the twentieth of July? Unless we have any pressing business? Is there any reason we'd have to meet before the twentieth?
There's nothing that jumps to mind that would require action, uh, on the twentieth. Uh, but with the understanding that if we can't do everything we need to do on the twenty second, we may need that executive session on the twenty ninth.
Yeah, I'm good with that. I have that, but after that, if we could... If you don't meet on the twenty ninth, then you're talking three, four weeks.
I don't have a problem with it. Just trying to think of what's, uh, what's on the horizon.
I mean, we have an October town meeting, but I think we have plenty of time to make sure we get all our ducks in a row for that.
Okay.
And did, I hear you say that the twenty ninth would probably be an executive session?
If, if at all.
If at all.
Any, if any meeting at all.
If any meeting at all, it would be, uh, it would be executive session. Otherwise, it's our intention to not have a meeting that night.
But if we went, as Mike suggested, you said the twentieth, is that right, Mike?
Mm-hmm.
Of July?
Well, we, we usually meet the first and third July, meeting in, uh, of the month. And I'm requesting that we don't have the first and, but we hold, we stay true to the second meeting in July.
Which would be the twentieth.
And that means we have a quite lengthy break. No doubt the town might be a little safer, but I don't know.
Uh, we will have met every day, every Monday.
Well, we'll schedule a meeting for the twentieth. Everyone, everyone can make the meeting on July twentieth?
I don't know yet, but...
Yeah, I don't know, but, yeah.
That's fine.
Which is the week that you said you couldn't make it, Steve?
The, the sixth.
Sixth.
I, I just think it, uh, I just think it's a long time. I mean, if we don't have a meeting, you go from the twenty second, so you've missed the twenty ninth, missed the sixth.
Thirteen, it's almost a month.
Yeah, so I think the thirteenth might be...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
You're saying thirteenth rather than the twentieth?
Right.
Yeah, only, only because of the timeline, and again, maybe matters that need to be considered by the board.
Well, then maybe we, and if it's not that, if there's not that much to do, then maybe we can push it back to the twentieth if we'd like.
Well, I, I think because people are making plans, it would be good to see if we can pick a couple of dates here between July and August that makes sense and, uh, you know, feel comfortable that we'll have a, either a complete, uh, board or a, a, a strong majority, meaning at least four members here.
Well, since neither of you have invited me to your vacation house, I'm flexible.
So you're suggesting the thirteenth, Steve?
I, I, just from a, a, a timeline of not meeting, never mind meeting, just, you know, figure out three weeks, that's, and then, then you can go, you know, third of the tenth of August, uh, I don't know.
Well, they may have...
Right now, I, I, I don't, I don't have any definitive plans, but I'm sure my social director will inform me when I do. But right now, I don't have any.
And they may have the...
You got any input?
No. I don't, I can't think of anything that's precedent or require a meeting on either of those particular dates.
I said that would be interesting. Yeah, they have the scoping sessions in July, so we, you know, we might want to be cognizant of that. I mean, we'd only go to one, but, uh, we don't know when that would be.
With FERC.
With FERC, yes.
Until we know, we don't know when those are gonna be, so...
Well, how many people can make the meeting on the thirteenth?
I can.
I can.
I believe I can too.
Michael, you...
It's okay, you can have a meeting, and I'll do the best I can.
No, no, I'm asking you, uh, if you have plans, that's what I'm trying to find out.
I don't know yet. I, I don't know yet, so just, let's just book it, it's fine.
All right, so we'll schedule a meeting on the thirteenth. And if we need a meeting, well, then maybe we could meet, uh... Just change this.
But we're gonna only meet once in July, at least scheduled wise.
Right.
Okay.
So, but now the question is, do we meet the first Monday in August? When's Labor Day? Labor Day's the seventh. And October town meeting is the fifth. And we have to do for that, so...
So August third and August seventeenth, is that what's next?
Yeah, well, our August tenth and thirty first, and then we can meet on the fourteenth and the twenty eighth. How's that sound?
You talking August?
Yeah.
The fourteenth is a variety.
No, I'm sorry, Steve, I, I skipped all the way into September.
Oh. So what are we talking about in August?
Right, so you're saying August tenth and thirty first.
That won't be the thirty first.
The thirty first.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
August tenth and twenty fourth.
That's not Labor Day, we can, we can...
We're gonna try to stay on the first and third Monday.
Well, what I was thinking was that because Labor Day was on the seventh, which is the first Monday in September, we'd meet on the fourteenth and the twenty eighth. And then the following Monday is October town meeting, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, given that,
Okay.
I was thinking the tenth and the thirty first, but it could be the tenth and the twenty fourth.
Seems like that would be it.
How's that work for everybody?
Yep.
Those books was working, so...
Tenth and twenty fourth.
Tenth and twenty fourth of August. And then the twenty fourth.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
I have a note here that, uh, I may not be able to attend on Monday, the tenth. I certainly can do what's necessary to prepare for, for the meeting, but I may not be able to attend.
Okay. How flexible are people for a different day on that? Is that one day, or are you awake for the week?
That, that week, that week may be a challenge.
That week, okay.
My apologies.
Well, meeting on, if we meet on the thirteenth, we could meet on the third.
Right.
Really, oh, okay.
The third and the twenty fourth.
How's that work for everybody?
Yep.
That works better for me.
All right. Okay with everybody?
Doesn't matter, just put it down.
I just added them all in.
Yeah, I...
You can tell me which ones I need to do, Liam, as we move along.
Yep. Once we get it, I'll go through the whole thing, okay, is that fair?
That'd be great.
Okay, so that's the, the... All right, so we will meet next week, which will be a water hearing, uh, and whatever else we have on the agenda, and also, uh, we'll go through the liaison assignments, and we'll neglecting getting it done, but we've had all these other things in between. And then, uh, if we need a, a, uh, executive session meeting regarding, uh, legal issues on the twenty ninth, we'll schedule it the night of the twenty second. We'll just leave the date open.
Twenty, okay.
Then we'll meet on the thirteenth. And that's, uh, that's in July. And then in August, the third and the twenty fourth. And then September would be the fourteenth and the twenty eighth.
Now I have to start writing, can't keep up. Nine fourteen and the twenty eighth? And it was eight.
And if something comes up regarding October town meeting that we have to squeeze something out, so...
So, September dates again then, Mr. Chairman?
Last, uh, fourteen
Fourteenth and twenty eighth.
And twenty eighth.
And it was three and the, and twenty four?
Yes.
Uh, in, uh, August?
Mm-hmm.
Obviously don't know how to amend this.
Okay. And then October town meeting is the fifth. And we'll deal with that as we get closer.
Okay.
At least we have a little bit of idea what summer, and if somebody can't make a meeting, I guess
I'll let you know.
we will survive. That's signed by the clerk, it'll be you. Everyone all set with that?
Yep.
How many of what date?
Okay, let's see, Town Administrator's report.
First week of Monday beginning?
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the packet.
No, I'm asking if I forgot anything.
Oh, yeah.
Fifth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I reported at the last regular meeting, I did testify at the hearing on the town's legislation to remove a portion of Swan Pond Road from Article ninety seven protection. Uh, the bill was reported out of the committee on May fourteenth and passed to be engrossed by the House on May eighteenth. I'm now working with Senator Tar's office, and I included a copy of my, uh, written testimony, which was submitted after the hearing. Um, as the board may know, the cost estimates for the replacement of the senior center van have exceeded available funds as a result of our intention not to trade in the old van. Finance Committee has approved a reserve fund transfer to make up the difference, and bids are due on the vehicle, uh, in, uh, in two weeks' time, uh, to allow it to be encumbered under a fiscal year twenty fifteen funds, as are available. A reserve fund transfer would be to supplement the capital approval, uh, of funds that was done last June. Finance Committee also approved ten thousand dollars in reserve fund dollars for a planning study of the fire, fire department's program and facility needs. I do anticipate awarding a contract, uh, later this week for that, uh, study, uh, to be done, uh, of the fire department's facility. And this would complement the capital improvements that, uh, are ongoing over the course of this month, um, and, uh, will be supplemented with the capital appropriation approved in June for next fiscal year. The town building a janitorial contract is presently out to bid. Uh, bids are due on June twenty fifth, and the contract effective date is projected to be in early August. We're having a walkthrough for prospective bidders later this week in the town buildings, and we do expect there to be heavy interest in the contract based on the number of people who have taken a, a copy of the, uh, bid. And finally, as, uh, I'm sure the community is well aware, we are in a stage one water restriction, um, for water use, uh, which limits water use to, to two days a week according to a schedule that's been published, uh, in transcript on the town, uh, town website, uh, and, uh, will also be circulated by social media. And again, we request a compliance on the part of residents to maintain our, our water levels. And that concludes my report for this evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Do you have anything to report on the Martin's Pond Airport?
Yes, um, we've, uh, we've unfortunately obtained conflicting information from state and federal agencies that are involved with regard to the matter. I received an email from the police chief late this afternoon that indicated that he believes that, uh, the, uh, the use of, uh, Martin's Pond as a landing location appears to be legal based on feedback from the Mass Aeronautics Commission. I think we're gonna consult with town council to make sure we have it right based on that feedback. But, um, it would appear at least that, uh, the latest word as of today is that, uh, the, uh, use of the, of the Martin's Pond for, as a landing location appears to be legal at this point. But, uh, over the past three business days, there's been many twists and turns with this particular issue, we'll continue to, to, to make sure we're, we're getting it right.
Mm-hmm.
Can I just, could you get a little more specific on the issue, because I'm not familiar with it?
Certainly, um, there, uh, evidently is a property owner on Martin's Pond who has acquired a, uh, seaplane and has been, uh, mooring it, uh, at, uh, at their home and used it for travel, apparently, uh, within the New England area. And, uh, there was, uh, some concern on the part of Martin's Pond, um, association members with regard to whether this was legal or not, that they've, uh, identified for the town. Um, they've also referred us to the town of Wakefield, which has a bylaw that specifically prohibits the, uh, use of, uh, seaplanes on, uh, wat, on Lake Quanapowit, but I think specifically in, uh, in Wakefield. So, we're, we're looking, the police department's been looking at those, uh, those items to determine whether or not this is, uh, legal or, or not here in, uh, in North Reading. Based on the available information from the state and federal agencies, again, over the couple of days that this was in our hands last week, uh, it was, uh, the information was conflicting, uh, in terms of whether it was legal or not. But again, as of today, I have a report from the police chief, uh, basically indicating that, uh, it appears that, uh, that this, uh, does appear legal according to the Mass Aeronautics Commission. But again, we'll be reviewing that information with town council as well to ensure we've got it right. I apologize, Mr. O'Leary, I thought you were on the email thread from, uh, Martin's Pond Association.
Are you all set?
Yes, that concludes my report.
Mr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Anyone ask questions about?
No, no.
No.
So, what do you want?
Old and new? Old and new.
Old and new.
Yeah.
Um, just in relation to the draft lease agreement on J.T. Berry, are we gonna be provided with a copy of that? Just to take a look and curious to see what, what's been drafted.
I'm happy to forward it.
Yeah, I, I asked, but I haven't gotten any response, I don't know. Yeah, well, I can make sure that it gets circulated by email.
Can you give us an update when your turn comes?
Yeah, sure.
Is there anything new?
There's nothing new, but I will give an update.
But obviously, it sounds like it's moving along, which is great, you know, and, uh, the sooner the better, as far as I'm concerned, get it, get it going.
No, I sent the email out last week to everybody, so... I thought, I apologize, 'cause I got the email from you, but I thought you were sending it to Michael.
I just sent it. No, I, I, I can, I'll make sure it gets sent.
We probably broke down that communication.
I'll make sure it gets sent out then.
All right, great, thank you. Just in relation to Hillview, to bring the board up to date, obviously, um, Town Administrator and I met with the Hillview Commission the other night, uh, to, uh, discuss, uh, the re-advertising of the lease for the Function Hall and Pub. So, uh, the commission is working diligently to, uh, re-advertise it and, uh, seeking solicitors now, more actively seeking solicitors in order to effectuate some sort of a, a lease agreement with somebody. As of right now, we don't have anybody, but, uh, what about you, Michael, but, uh, I thought the meeting went pretty well, and I feel confident with the, uh, commissioner's efforts, you know, and their game plan, I think, is pretty sound, so...
I agree.
And that process is starting, or started, but I don't know when the actual advertisement, do you know when the advertising's gonna?
They were, I know, looking to get quotes for the cost advertised, but I got the impression it would be, you know, raised, you know, not, not months.
Um, the other thing, I had a couple of, uh, several people pass this week, but a couple of people, uh, you know, Doug Tarbox, uh, who volunteered, uh, recently last few years at the senior center, uh, untimely passing there, and of course, Barbara O'Brien. Her contributions to this community are, uh, somewhat renowned, I mean, people do know, you know, that she's worked very hard and to, uh, retain the historical, um, records of the town and, uh, put in probably close to fifty years, I mean, she's a lifelong resident of the community. Uh, she and her husband, Nick, have, uh, contributed, uh, endlessly over time, but Barbara in particular has worked very hard to preserve, um, the historical records. Been very diligent, along with, uh, some other people in the Historical and Aquarium Society over the years to make sure that, you know, we don't forget, uh, our past and, uh, what, uh, people, uh, did in the years past to make this community what it is today. And, uh, she's had a great appreciation, and I believe her legacy is going to be, uh, just that, that she, uh, was able to, uh, memorialize an awful lot of the historical, uh, happenings around the community and for generations to enjoy in years to come, so, um, untimely passing, uh, sympathies go out to Nick and P.H. and Jesse and, uh, her entire family. But it's a tremendous loss to the community, and, uh, she'll be sorely missed. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Um, and, uh, old business, new business scenario, um, the, in our next meeting, I'd, I'd like to have on the agenda for us to approve the, um, um, tele, uh, telecommunications requirement of, uh, officially starting the, what's the name of the process? For the cable, for cable TV, that the advisory committee has to formal renewal process. It's, uh, effective, uh, actually, I think tomorrow.
Now, is this for Comcast or Verizon or?
This one would be for Verizon. Uh, Comcast is six months later. So, it's just the beginning of the formal process.
I thought we had Comcast in play, and then we signed the Verizon. Maybe Comcast got renewed right after that, and then you get it off.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a
Okay.
Either a three-month or a six-month, uh, gap, but it's, uh, this is for Verizon, and, uh, so, and on the twenty-second meeting, I'd like to, uh, begin the formal process.
Okay, same order.
Okay, uh, also, I just wanted to let you all know that, um, Kate's last name is Manupelli. Okay, it's Manupelli.
This is correct.
Not Manapelli, not Menipoli, nothing.
Thank you. Manupelli. Fine Irish name, right?
That's all I have.
No, it's a beautiful Italian name, I have a beautiful Italian husband, yes, Mrs. Manupelli, thank you.
I have to apologize, I was thinking what you've never said in here.
It's all right.
I'm, I'm finished, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
I have no business, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Just a quick update on the J.T. Berry, I sent out an email last week. Um, it is going through the legislation process through the Senate. Uh, there was a small holdup, uh, there was one member that had some questions. I've been on the phone with Senator Tar's office several times. We've answered, it seems that everybody's on the same page now, I think all the questions have been answered. Um, it would've been more of an educational process. Hope, we're hopeful that it'll get through, hopefully by the end of the month, and then we can get back to work. Um, and you, hopefully you'll get the LDA, but we've been, at least got our legal counsel to look at it, which we've already sent back to D.C.A.M., and we haven't received any response back from them yet. But we assume that once this gets through the legislation process, we will soon hear from them. And we are also have, uh, drafted an RFP that Michael and I are still continuing to work on, uh, to go out and seek a commercial real estate company upon, uh, the acquisition of the property, so we can go out and market it, and part of that agreement will be a market study, will be an appraisal, um, as part of that contract. So, that's really all, all the information I have on the J.T. Berry. The Economic Development Committee has taken the efforts to try to maybe get away from calling it the J.T. Berry property and calling it the Lowell Road property. Um, just get used to calling it something other than the J.T. Berry. Uh, it would obviously be up to this board what we want to name it, if you want to name it down the road, but where, so if you see something in writing that's called the Lowell Road Pro, property, that's the property we're referring to. I just want to pass along my condolences to the O'Brien family. Uh, it is a severe loss for their family, and, uh, my condolences go out to all of them, sincere condolences, that's all I have.
Thank you, Michael.
Just before you conclude, just in, in relation to, to this project, here, the, the Kinder Morgan thing, we should, probably should have corralled our legislators in relation to the, uh, proposed legislation to, um...
Oh, that we filed in that letter?
Oh, we filed a letter, but no, that, that legislation to, uh, to, to not, uh, to make sure that the ratepayers are not paying for the costs associated with, uh, any of this, uh, that it can't be passed on. You know, I, I just think it's another, uh, good move on our part to support pieces of legislation such as that, and I would suggest that, uh, under the signature...
You may not support it.
Well, to support the, the legislation that's being proposed. To exempt the ratepayers from carrying the cost, covering the cost. But I think under, under the chairman's signature, I think we should, uh, encourage our legislators to, uh, support that effort.
So in addition to us approving, uh...
The letter for the, uh, from the Northwest...
Suggesting we put a letter out to our legislators regarding that.
I don't know what the consensus is, but...
Yeah, it was in the thought process, I had that, uh...
Totally agree with that.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree.
Okay, all right, we'll do it.
Not looking to get into a large conversation on it, but just maybe clarification for myself. So, just reading through the tea leaves, did I understand when the discussion about Article ninety seven come up, that the original path changed because it seemed in Kinder Morgan's best position to get the support of those legislators was to take it out of those towns? The majority, so they could get the, the two-thirds vote they were looking for, is that kind of what I?
I think what they said was, you know, it was, you know, over the river and through the woods. Uh, but going over the river and through the woods required more parcels subject to the, the conservation issues. So they were going the other way of trying to follow the utility lines where it may have already been impacted, so the impact on those types of, uh, parcels was minimized by taking this other circuitous route through our neighborhoods.
This is all, this is all about going through a mad maze, right? To find a path to get to the exit, all right, with minimum, uh, effort legally, cost-wise and everything else.
Interesting response, though. They didn't say they, well, they've made a commitment to go that route.
Right, all right.
It may not, uh, there's a way to go that.
Push comes to shove, you don't know. You know, once the focus is on it, it clears in a, you know, a necessity, then all bets are off.
But, but they, they said they, they've never, uh, done that, they've never, uh, not, they never bypassed the state.
I can't imagine...
And that's what they said.
You know, two-thirds.
Yeah.
But again, the vast majority of the legislators are not impacted by this, uh...
That's why I...
Two-thirds plus one, right?
No, but, so, but you have other dynamics here, okay, so you have, you have the, uh, the Environmental Protection Agency saying you can't use coal, coal in, uh, electrical generators, right? So they're shutting those down, which means there's more energy required to generate the electricity of the need. So when we start having on and off blackouts, then all of a sudden, people's attitudes change, you know? Hopefully it doesn't get to that.
Hey, Bob, Bob?
Yes.
Please recognize the young boy with the red hair who was here, spending all day.
Okay, I, I don't know who he is, why he's here. But maybe he could tell us.
Mayor Badger.
Well, you've earned it.
You've earned it.
And I, I take you're going for Eagle Scout?
Yeah.
Okay, how far along are you?
I'm a life scout, so I have.
Life scout? It's a lot of work, but congratulations.
Anybody gives you a hard time, have them talk to us.
You're on tape. Good cover. So, that's all, I didn't mean to interrupt you for you, but it was just one of the thoughts.
I'm good.
Okay, so, I will send out my recommendations for our set of liaison assignments. And so, we can discuss it at our next meeting. And if any of you want to trade with any one of the rest of you, it's okay by me, okay? But after I get the first level assignments up, I don't anticipate making many changes. Short of Kate, maybe going through was on Joe's list and seeing if we want to make a few changes there. And if anyone has something that they want, let me know in advance. See what we can do, okay? Thank you for saying so much about Barbara. Both her and Nick are really true friends, have always supported me, and, you know, I think both of them contributed significantly to the community. And I know Barbara suffered for a long time, but I hope she rests in peace, and my condolences to the whole family. I, I guess what I'd like to do is, and I want to apologize. I think I've raised my voice and got a little angry twice since I've been chairman, tonight being one of them. And I apologize, I just got to the point where this thing has gone on for so long, and we finally got this close. And I saw, you know, maybe going in the wrong direction, and I got a little, little more emotional than I should, yeah, so I apologized. And I wasn't really attacking comments, I just said, it's not, one thing leads to another, leads to another, and I was just, I had this vision in my head, and I'm very sorry about that. I think that's all I have.
Thank the school administration for allowing us to.
You might get a lot angrier if I keep sitting here. You might, maybe you should move my seat, because maybe through this, you might, we might have heated debates a lot, I don't know.
No, 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 that's fine.
You have committed a lot of time to this, and I, I thought it was great that you were able to get to the point where you got to, but I did think some of those things should be, you know, but no harm, no foul, don't, thank you.
That's okay. Michael's reminding, we should thank the school administration for letting us use this fighting facility, even though we've helped pay for it.
Well, we did, yeah, we did, they, they just set it all up for us.
Thank you. And thank Gene for helping out with the technology this evening. Hopefully, it'll be easier as we go forward. And with that, I want to obtain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by the steel, second by the scissors. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You did it, good.